I call this meeting of the Salem City Council for July 16th to order. If the Recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Kizer.
President.
Counselor Anderson.
Likewise.
Counselor Nenke.
Yes.
Counselor McCoy.
Here.
Counselor Osik, absent.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook is absent and in her place is serving as guest counselor is Ted Burney.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
Here.
Okay, would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor McCoy. It's approval of the special meeting agenda.
Whoops.
That's what these agendas are here for.
Can I move approval of special meeting agenda?
Second by Nenke. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Counselor McCoy.
There's no additions or deletions to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Alrighty. Any comments from council? Yes, sir.
It's a somewhat dry heat.
It is. Just hardly noticeable, right? Anyone else? Any other weather reports? Okay. Mr. Manager?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll open our public hearing.
The City Council will now conduct a public hearing concerning the adoption of the State Street Corridor Plan. The criteria applicable to the proposed amendment are Salem Revised Code, Chapters 64, 110, and 265. Testimony must be directed toward the identified criteria or other criteria the person believes to apply to the decision. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons. Neighborhood associations are limited to five minutes per association, and individuals testifying are limited to three minutes. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time has expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Kim, you'll be our leader today. You're on.
I am a planner with the Community Development Department here tonight to present the State Street Corridor Plan project. The State Street Corridor Plan aims to revitalize State Street between 12th and 25th Street into a vibrant, walkable, mixed-use district. It really aims to create a corridor that people want to work, shop, live, do business, as opposed to just being a place that people can drive through. So the State Street Corridor Plan is really looking to make these improvements through land use and street design changes. The project has resulted in a proposal to create two new mixed-use zones and a new street design. I'll be walking through both of those. I'll first walk through the proposed mixed-use zones and then the street design. So this map here shows the study area. It shows State Street between 12th and 25th Street. To the north is Nenn and to the south is Sesna. This project really stems from a council goal several years ago from then-counselor Bennett, now Mayor Bennett, and the Nenn-Sesna Neighborhood Plan that was adopted in 2015. We've been working on this plan since 2015, and we've done a lot of outreach. The stars there show the public meetings, but we've also done outreach in terms of having a stakeholder advisory committee with representatives from the neighborhoods, developers, planning commissioners, and other stakeholders. We've done a walking tour. We've had stakeholder interviews. We've done a survey. We've had emails, social media, videos. I've gone door-to-door. So we've done as much outreach as we can to make sure people are aware of this and have an opportunity to give input. We've taken all the input over those last three years and I'm proposing a staff recommendation tonight that I'll talk about. So State Street today, as you know, has a mix of uses. There's office, retail, auto services, there's some housing, but there's also a lot of vacant and underutilized properties. So one of the goals of this project is really to encourage redevelopment and development of mixed-use development along State Street and to make sure it's pedestrian-friendly in design. The existing zoning today is really a patchwork. There's retail office, there's commercial office, there's multifamily, and all of these different zones along State Street have different regulations. So in some of the zones, you can do retail outright, some of the zones you can't do retail at all, some of the zones you can do multifamily outright, some of the zones you have to get a conditional use permit. So it really is difficult to consistent redevelopment and have a really unique corridor that is consistent under today's zoning. So what the proposal tonight is, is to create two mixed-use zones, Mixed Use 1 and Mixed Use 2. Mixed Use 1 is the red portion on the map largely between 12th and 17th Street. Mixed Use 2 is the orangish color between 17th and 25th Street. So these zones allow, would allow the same uses. So you could do retail, office, multifamily, all outright. It wouldn't require that you do any of those uses. It wouldn't require that you mix uses, for example, but it would allow those outright. Auto services and auto-related uses would be prohibited, but if you're an existing auto use, like a service station or a gas station, you could stay there indefinitely, you could be rebuilt, so those existing services could remain. Both the Mixed Use 1 and Mixed Use Zone 2 have a proposed maximum height of 55 feet or four stories, and both of them have requirements for kind of simple design standards to make sure that development is pedestrian-friendly. So for example, both zones require ground floors to have windows, awnings, parking would have to be located to the rear or the side of buildings, for example. And while these zones, while this map shows the Mixed Use 1 and Mixed Use 2 zones applied to State Street, if these zones are adopted, they would be zones that could be applied citywide. So a property owner in a different part of the city could apply for either one of the zones. Currently, we don't have any mixed-use zones that a person can just apply for. Generally, our mixed-use areas in the city have been created through overlay zones that are very specific to very specific areas, and a property owner can't apply for those. So while we're talking about State Street tonight, I just wanted to note that these are zones that would be applied, could be applied, in other places. So the main difference between the Mixed Use 1 and Mixed Use 2 zones is essentially in the design standards. So the Mixed Use 1 zone is really meant so that it could accommodate, or development in that zone could accommodate retail on the ground floor, even if it was first developed as, say, residential. So the Mixed Use 1 zone would, for example, require higher ceiling heights for the ground floor, more windows, more awnings. You wouldn't have to, again, develop it as retail, but it could be, the idea is that it could accommodate retail in the future. And this really aligns with our economic analysis that we did as part of this study. That kind of western portion between 12th and 17th Street really has more potential for development and redevelopment, so the idea is that this is the area where if there's a market for retail and commercial uses, it could be accommodated in the future on the ground floor of buildings. So one of the design standards that Steph has proposed is that if there is a dwelling unit that's on the ground floor, it would need to be somewhat separated from the sidewalk, whether it's from a couple steps up or pushed back, say, a minimum of five to 10 feet. The thinking behind this was that if you're having a ground-floor dwelling unit, it would make these units a little bit more livable not to be right on the sidewalk, and would really increase the comfort also of pedestrians walking by, so you're not walking by someone's front door. The Planning Commission wanted to remove this requirement in the Mixed Use 1 zone. I think that the general thinking was that it would be easier if you didn't have this requirement in the Mixed Use 1 zone to make that conversion from residential to commercial in the future. The biggest concern we probably have heard throughout this process in terms of the zoning is the maximum height that's being proposed. Again, we're proposing a maximum height of 55 feet. There's been concern that these, a building this high in the Mixed Use 1 zone would have impacts on the properties to the north, specifically in the historic district, through shadows and other impacts. So I'm going to walk through kind of what we've done to address those concerns. Initially, we proposed that the Mixed Use 1 zone would have a maximum height of 65 feet, which would allow five stories. Based on the concerns that we've heard, we lowered that to a maximum height of 55 feet. We've also increased the setback to an abutting residential zone, so if the Mixed Use 1 zone is next to a residential zone, the setback was increased from five to 10 feet. In addition, we proposed having a greater setback based on the height of the building, and I'll show you kind of what that means. So essentially, the Mixed Use 1 and Mixed Use 2 zones, a building that is developed on those properties, if it abuts a residential zone, has to be at least 10 feet back. And as that building, though, gets taller, it needs to be further away from the residential zone. So on this picture, State Street would be where the tallest, on the side of where the building is the tallest. This setback or setback would apply regardless of if there is an alley. Currently, in our zoning today, in the zoning that's in place today, there's no setback required if there is an alley. In addition, that setback would have to, under the proposed zoning, have a screening, so there's additional buffers to the residential zone. There would need to be a six-foot-tall wall or fence that would be landscaped. And again, today in zoning, there is no setback, no landscaping, no screening if there is an alley. So we're really trying to create a zone that mitigates some of the impacts to abutting residential zones regardless of if there is an alley, because there is an alley in this So essentially, based on that kind of setback that's based on height, if a building is 55 feet tall, the maximum height that we're proposing, that portion of the building would need to be 70 feet away from the residential zone. And as I mentioned earlier, because we are requiring parking to be to the rear or to the side, and most likely you would have parking to the rear, and so the building itself wouldn't have that crazy kind of shape, potentially, but it would actually just be a 55-foot building further away from the residential zones. Another concern we heard throughout the process was kind of the impact of parking. There are concerns from the neighborhood of potential spillover parking from development on State Street into the neighborhoods, and there were also requests from property owners and developers to lower the parking requirements to make it more viable to do development in this corridor. Staff is recommending that we conduct a parking management plan to look at all of these potential impacts, similar to what we did in the North Broadway area. There, we adopted mixed-use overlay zones, and after there was some development, we went forward with a parking management plan that really did look at the impacts of the parking. Was it really a problem? What could be done to mitigate those impacts? So that's what staff is recommending. We brought that to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission is recommending that the parking requirement for retail uses be reduced from the current one space per 250 square feet to one space per 400 square feet. I think the thinking there was that because retail is not being required in either of the zones, this would actually incentivize people to do retail, which is what the neighborhoods are looking for on the ground floor. So now I'm going to turn to the street. As you all are probably familiar with State Street today, it's two lanes in each direction, pretty narrow sidewalks, and really no bike lanes unless you get to 24th to 25th Street. So it's generally geared towards automobiles right now driving through, and not so pleasant for people who want to walk or take their bike down the street. So one of the goals of the State Street Corridor Plan project was to make this area more bicycle and pedestrian-friendly, and so we looked at that in the street designs that I'm going to be talking about tonight. So we looked at three street design options, and I will walk through each of those briefly tonight. There's the improved four lane that basically keeps four lanes on State Street, the road diet, which changes the configuration throughout State Street to three lanes, and then the hybrid, which is really a half-and-half. Half of the improved four lane, half of the road diet. So I'll talk about those more in detail. We're recommending the hybrid, which I'll also discuss in more detail. All of these options were really studied in quite a lot of detail. We did a traffic analysis that looked at what are the impacts of all these different street design options? What are the impacts in terms of congestion, in terms of diversion and cut-through traffic, in terms of safety? So we analyzed kind of a range of factors to come up with our recommendation tonight. So currently, State Street is a major arterial. It's classified as a major arterial, and we're not proposing to change that classification. But today, a major arterial is expected or supposed to be 96 feet wide. That is a cross-section that you see on the screen is what is adopted in the TSP today, the Transportation System Plan. So State Street is supposed to be two lanes in each direction, bike lanes, no on-street parking, a center median, and wider sidewalks. So State Street, as you all know, is not that wide today. It gets quite narrow as you travel east. It gets closer to 55 to 60 feet wide as you get, as you go east. So if we were to implement this, this cross-section, a lot of properties would essentially be wiped out. And another kind of result of this cross-section being for State Street is that if anyone wants to redevelop their property, they essentially have to reserve or dedicate the front portion of their property to a future widening that probably is not going to happen. So they're losing some development potential by having this as the adopted street design. So this project is really looking at what is the right street design for this street, given kind of the existing conditions as it is today, because it is a developed street. So the first option I'm going to talk about is called the road diet. It essentially would change the configuration of the street from two lanes in each direction to one lane in each direction and a center-turn lane, and it would add bike lanes and widen the sidewalks. This is the option that the public that participated in this project and came to the public meetings advocated for and largely overwhelmingly supported. Both the Nenn and Sesna, the neighborhoods that abut State Street, have also voiced their support for this option. Staff looked at this option, and again, we did a traffic study that looked at the impacts. And when we looked at the impacts, one of the things that came back from that study is that the road diet could potentially work if roughly a third of the traffic during the rush hour diverted elsewhere, diverted off of State Street. So when staff kind of looked at that result, we did not think it was probably likely that that amount of diversion would occur. So as a result, there would probably be more congestion on State Street, or there'd be a lot of cut-through traffic through the neighborhoods. And for that main reason, we are not recommending the road diet. Another option that we looked at is called the improved four lane. This would essentially keep two lanes on each direction and largely keep State Street as it is today, but would widen the sidewalks. This is the recommendation that came out of the Planning Commission. I think one of the main concerns from the Planning Commission was concerns about congestion and also some concerns about whether a bike lane would be continuous along the whole extent of State Street. So staff's recommendation is kind of a half-and-half, as I mentioned earlier. Half-road diet from 14th to 17th, and then keeping the four lanes from 17th to 24th Street. So by having a bike lane from 14th to 17th Street, that bike lane would connect to the existing bike lanes on 17th Street and could connect to, and I'll show a map later, the family-friendly bikeways that we have on the parallel routes to State Street. It would also support the economic analysis. Again, that economic analysis said there's more development potential in this western portion, and so that would be supported by this road diet from 14th to 17th Street. And it would keep, like I said, the four lanes from 17th to 24th Street, but it would widen the sidewalks. And again, one of the biggest priorities that came out of the State Street project was this idea of pedestrian safety. We want to make, people really wanted to make the streets safer to walk along, to cross, and generally just to be in this area. And so even though it keeps four lanes, the big change would be the widened sidewalk. And so the hybrid would also, based on that traffic study, would lead to less diversion into the neighborhoods, and so that's one of the reasons that staff is recommending it. There's less traffic generally in this western portion where the road diet, where we're recommending this change in the road, to the road from 14th to 17th Street than, and there's more traffic from 17th to 24th Street. So that's one of the reasons that the traffic analysis came back, that this would work in terms of traffic flow, for example. And generally, this again would support kind of the broader vision of revitalizing State Street into kind of a mixed-use pedestrian-friendly corridor. So one of the things the traffic study looked at was what would, how would the intersections perform in 20 years based on traffic volumes that were projected? And the reason to look at the intersections' performance is really, does it meet city standards? And what that means is, is it really, is it really an indicator that there'd be significant congestion or delays? So as you can see here, if there was even no change on State Street, we didn't recommend, we didn't make any changes, there would still be intersections that wouldn't meet city standards. And that really was the case for all three of the options that we looked at. So as part of the hybrid, we're recommending that there's intersection improvements to 14th Street and 17th Street, like extra turn lanes, right turn lanes, for example, so that the intersections would meet city standards. So again, like I referred to earlier, the State Street Project would keep the parallel bike routes on Schmecker Street and Mill Street, but it would add a new pedestrian-bicycle bridge over the creek at 24th Street, which would make the connection to the bike lanes on 24th Street simpler than it is today. And again, pedestrian safety being a major priority that came out of this project, the hybrid would add pedestrian crossings. At 15th Street, there would be median island, and at 19th and 21st Street, there would be the flashing, rapid, rapid flashing beacons that you see outside of City Hall. And there would also be a median at 25th Street. So just to kind of, in summary, the proposed hybrid street design would improve the bicycle and pedestrian facilities. It recognizes the movement of traffic and the idea of diversion and cut-through traffic, would promote safety, and really overall would just really support this idea of redevelopment and the vision for the corridor. We are recommending, if the state, if the hybrid street design is adopted and constructed, that the city would actually evaluate how it performs before and after, how the street performs. So we would look at things like cut-through traffic, delays, and just safety generally, and see if, if everything performed okay, is there an opportunity to extend the reconfiguration, the road diet idea, all the way to 25th Street? So that is something that is recommended in the ordinance before you tonight. And I just wanted to show a cross-section. So the top picture is the proposed hybrid design from 17th to 24th Street that keeps the four lanes, but I wanted to show that there's nothing, that if you were to construct the hybrid, there's nothing in that kind of construction project that would prevent a future conversion to a road diet. So if evaluation did come back that the hybrid was performing okay, it could be extended potentially to 24th Street without ripping up all the improvements that were made. So staff is recommending that the City Council adopt the proposed amendments to adopt new zoning and a new street design for State Street. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. I do, Eunice, want to compliment you and Lisa on the work you did over the past couple of years in terms of the public outreach. It really was, I think, a model of how this can be done, so thank you very much. I followed it fairly closely, and it went quite well. I'm going to start, we've got a fairly long list of folks who are going to be speaking tonight, so again, just to reiterate what the recorder mentioned, if you're a representative of your, of the neighborhood group, please say so. You'll get five minutes, but you have to be the only representative of the neighborhood group. And then everyone else will get three minutes. When the orange light comes on, you have used up two, you have one minute left. When the red light comes on, please just stop speaking so I don't have to interrupt you. I sound really rude when I'm interrupting, and I don't like doing that, so if you just cooperate with that, I'd appreciate it. John Poole?
I'm John Poole, 1566 Court Street. I have two signatures here, which will be added to a petition that's going to be presented to you later, but I'd like to submit to the record.
Could you speak into the mic, Mr. Poole? We just can't hear.
I'm sorry. There. John Poole, 1566 Court Street. I have two signatures to a petition that's going to be submitted to you with a letter. They came in as late. I requested a visual impact study, and none was done, so I went ahead and prepared these photos, which I'd like to show the council. This is 1794, and this has photo.
You'll have to get to the mic, Mr. Poole.
This has a photo with a superimposition of the worst-case scenario, what could be built on State Street, and the impact it would have, and how it would show in the neighborhood. I prepared all four of these. This is Victoria Street, and then let me take these down. Here is our house over there on the left, and to the right is the old Peck House, one story, one and a half stories. And this is 15th Street, where, where it comes in on Court Street. Now I'd like to show you the video that I prepared, that was the shadow study. I requested a shadow study, but none was to be had. What you'll see here, it's starting now. It shows December 21. It works through the day, and the bottom right has the time of day, and as it progresses, you'll see how the shadows move about on the property. I had it turned here so you could see what the effect would be on State Street, because you'll get some shadows from the buildings across the street. I also made our house, which is in yellow, and the garage in white, and then the house next door, the Peck House, in green. I elevated those up so you could see how much of the shadow covers. I also submitted in a letter the 3 o'clock shadow profiles, so you could compare that with your ordinance. And then what will be shown here will be the March 21st date. And you'll see at the morning, the shadows are not bad, but what happens towards the So here's noon. Here's 4 o'clock, starting to come in, about 5 o'clock.
Mr. Poole, your time's up.
Very good.
Now, any questions? Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, when you say you're depicting the worst-case scenario, was that buildings at 65 feet or 55 feet?
In the shadow study, it's 55. In the pictures, it's 50. Each floor is 10 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Kizer?
Thanks, yeah. A couple of questions. First of all, thank you for testifying and showing us this. So you're, on your shadow study, you're assuming a solid mass of building basically between 13th Street and 17th Street, is that correct?
Yeah, that's to cover any potential.
Okay, that's, that's no, like, property lines or considering it's owned by different people, and that's assuming somebody buys all of the lots and then develops a gigantic building that stretches four blocks long?
Right.
Okay. I see on your shadow study, it looks like many of the buildings are not set back from the property line? Is this taken into account?
Yes, the, the, the big mass that's between Court Street and State is set back 10 feet from the alley line.
And what about the other there? Can you maybe change the colors so you can actually see that?
Let's see if I can go back here. There, is that better?
Yeah. So you're saying all of those buildings you depicted are set back?
Yes, they should be set back.
Okay, because it's looking like they're not, between the alley, along the backside of Court Street.
And earlier that I had done, I went to the alley line that I submitted to the Planning Commission, but at that time I wasn't sure where the line was, so I revised this, and I moved the buildings between State and Court Street back 10 feet from the southern alley line.
And does this account for the foot and a half of setback for every foot above 15 feet?
Absolutely.
Is that how you did this?
Absolutely, yeah. It's the 15, 10, and if I zoomed in, and I can make the file available to the city.
Actually, I've seen it before, but I haven't been able to ask you questions about it. So, okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Poole. Juliana Enman?
Juliana Enman, 1566 Court Street, and I would like to thank you for opening the Cooling Center this evening here at City Hall. We really appreciate it. Some of my neighbors and I took a deep dive into the existing Unified Development Code and visited all the overlay districts, and in my written testimony that you already have, included a table with some of the information extracted from that. And using precedents that the city has in the Unified Development Code, particularly from the overlay districts, I would like to suggest that there be some modifications to what's been proposed tonight and to add at least an MU3 zone and consider the possibility of additional multi-mixed-use zones that could eventually replace all of these overlay zones. In the, in the proposed MU3 In the, in the proposed MU3 zone, which would, could be located on the north side of State Street, we would like to see a 45-foot building height maximum with five feet of screened mechanical permitted, 20-foot zone-to-zone setback. Add additional language about vehicle access for multifamily serving more than three units or for commercial, not being able to use the alleyway, as in the other residential area alleyways that are in overlays, that have overlay zones, and have a slight change in the landscape standards for the alleyway, allowing a type B landscape standard. The non-residential building height is restricted to 35 feet in multiple overlay zones adjacent to arterial traffic areas where they abut residential properties. We would like to see an additional 10 feet of setback from the alleyway or from the property line to mitigate the shading impact. This additional 10-foot setback plus 10-foot reduction in height on that side of the street in that particular orientation will eliminate the shading effect on the adjacent properties and is precedent in overlay zones for, if you look at Chapter 531 of the Unified Development Code. There is precedent for protection of the residential alleyways in Chapters 625 and We are, would like to also see some language added. Is it three minutes?
Time's up.
Okay, thank you.
We have your written testimony, though. It was very complete, very good. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you for testifying tonight. I didn't quite follow your vehicle access comments. Could you reiterate that and maybe go into a little bit more detail on what you meant there?
Yes, the alleyway is 16 feet wide and does not meet city standards for commercial or for multifamily unit development as a driveway. Minimum driveway width is 22 to maximum of 40 feet in width. So having commercial buildings, you know, parking lots for commercial buildings and these multifamily buildings coming out into a 16-foot-wide alley where there's not, it's a dead-end alley, does not permit two-way traffic. So it really doesn't meet the city standards for that kind of use, so we would like to see it protected in the future as things are redeveloped and focus driveways onto State Street. All of the properties currently are served by driveways on State Street, so, you know, keep the focus on State Street, parking at the rear. And in the suggested language, we're just talking about vehicle use, pedestrian gates and, you know, going into the alley with your bicycle and that kind of thing would be, would be fine. It's just, you know, trying to bring trash, you know, trash trucks and delivery vehicles and two-way traffic on a 16-foot-wide alley just doesn't work. There, this is, some of the overlay zones have this exact same language, so that's what we would like to see is protection of that in the future--
Thank you.
--as it's, as it's redeveloped.
Counselor Lewis?
Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
My question is about the shadowing. Currently, the way things are today, are you free of any shadowing during the winter or is that an issue today?
Well, our property backs up to the old Travel Lodge, so that has a wall, a 21- or 22-foot wall right on the edge of the alley, so we get shading from that wall. There is no, no setback, step-back or, and that does fall on our garage in the wintertime.
And what you're telling us is that if the height was reduced to 45 feet and the setback were increased to 20 feet, that that would eliminate any chance of shadowing?
It would, it would be comparable to having an eight- or nine-foot-high fence along the, our side of the alley. So it mitigates almost completely the shading. And the building heights in the overlay district, in a lot of the overlay districts is 35 feet. So this is, and these are for the overlay districts where residential abuts commercial along the arterials for commercial and liberty in those streets. So this is higher than those. It would be, it could still be, you know, four-story buildings, but they would be lower ceiling heights in the upper floors.
Thank you very much. Hazel Patton, followed by Sam Brentano and then Roger Hall.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Hazel Patton, and I'm a resident of the Court Schumeketa Residential Historic District. And we are pleased that our State Street was chosen to be a part of this project and that it perhaps will be a model for other neighborhood revitalization projects. The opportunity to work with our neighbors in Cessna was, was an added bonus. Salem has a strong history of saving and preserving its historic entities. The city owns and maintains five historic homes. Portland only has one. We are home to five historic districts with the Court Schumeketa Residential Historic District being the second oldest. We as a community value and protect our historic heritage. I'm here today to ask you to once again preserve one of our historic assets by changing the proposed zoning on the north side of State Street. Cessna has already indicated they would accept taller buildings on their south side of State Street. An example of how this might look is the Broadway development, where the west side of the street has tall apartments and parking behind, and the east side, between Belmont and Gaines, has smaller structures and abuts a residential street. While there is so much to celebrate with this State Street project, there are many valid concerns which have or will be explained here this evening. With that in mind, I respectfully ask that the State Street Corridor Plan be revisited before any final decision is made. Can I give my minutes to somebody else?
No. But we'll let you keep talking. Does anyone have any questions for Hazel? Thank you very much. Sam Brentano?
Good evening. Mayor Bennett, Council, I'm Sam Brentano, Marion County Commissioner, live at 605 West Main Street in Sublimity. Hate to waste my time, but I tell a story for context. Several years ago, some bike lanes showed up behind our building on High and Church Street, took away a lane. When I complained or queried about it, I was told, well, the county received a notice of the hearing, and in fact, the hearing was held in your building, but nobody made any comment. So seeing the State Street thing happening, I wanted to make sure we're at least on record with what our concerns are, and they're pretty simple. It's really having to do with the movement of traffic east and west in a major corridor. We made a big investment downtown, actually a reinvestment with Courthouse Square, the courthouse, and certainly all the more important local enterprises there, people have to be able to get at them. So I understand neighborhoods and people walk and bike, I get it, but this particular street is, is a thoroughfare that serves downtown and even further east and west. I asked our county engineer to just not let me talk, as that's always the safest, but, and give me some, a quick analysis, and I got that, and these aren't, they're a little too critical, I'm not trying to say that, but I just want them on the record so you're aware of what the county thinks. The first, as she said, and contrary to what Eunice pointed out, analysis and modeling were done on State Street Corridor, but the results seemed to not carry much weight in the overall criteria review. No analysis apparent for the other corridors, which are, will have significant impacts, were looked into. And this is the key one. This seems to be, this is more about what they want the corridor to redevelop like, and I'm just interjecting, I'm all for development and growth, that's not our issue, it's just, it's just the traffic impacts. And less about how the corridor functions as a regional east-west route in the Salem Central area. It didn't strike me as a very balanced study and certainly didn't even discuss the importance of State Street as a regional radial facility connecting the Willamette River Bridge, downtown Core, State Capitol, Courthouse Square, the courthouse I-5, Marion County. So all I'm asking is whatever you decide, I like the planning commission's four-lane, whatever lets traffic go through and doesn't impede it, we're, we're fine. Thank you.
Any questions for Commissioner Brentano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming down, Commissioner. I just wanted to be clear, are you speaking on your own behalf or on the behalf of the board?
I'm the designated county critic.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Lewis?
Okay, well, I'm going to ask you a dream question on what if. So there are problems with, with State Street, even with four lanes, two going each way. If somebody stops, you got one lane and you got people from two lanes going into one. What if it could be shown that doing this design, I'm talking about the hybrid, doing that could actually keep the traffic in that area moving and being able to have the same level of capacity of car movement? What if that could be true?
If that's what your study showed and it was conclusive, I can't argue. If it made it go better, I'm all for it, but I drive that road every night, and I just picture one lane, you get behind a bus now, if you can't get behind, it's a long trip to airport way. If there's only one lane, I could think traffic backs up clear to downtown. The alternative might be, just to throw it out, to increase capacity, I don't know how, but to Mission or Center and let them take some of the load, but plan for it, and I don't see that that's been done yet.
Commissioner, one of the things Ms. Kim pointed out was that in our transportation system plan, really, State Street should be 96 feet--
I saw that.
--which means we would be wiping out business and housing.
I'm not for that either.
No, it'd be, carry a lot of traffic, if that's the--
Well, now it's starting to sound better, but that is not--
I just wanted to see if there were limits to your traffic--
There is, I, I know. Get all you can, I like the, for me, the four lanes, wider sidewalks, that would improve pedestrian and still allow traffic to go through.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kaiser?
Thank you. So I'm a traveler of State Street, too. I work at the Oregon Department of Forestry right across from the prison. So what I find often happens is when you're in the middle travel lane, somebody stops and turns left.
Yeah, there you stop, too.
And then the traffic backs up, and then everybody's trying to whip around, and I've even seen on occasion where there's an accident that happens because somebody's stopped turning left and then somebody else rams them from behind. And so effectively, what I see happening on State Street, and I drive it almost every day, is that effectively it's already a two-lane with a turn lane, because when that traffic stops, it can back up for a block or two, depending on how heavy the traffic is coming the other way. I'm just curious if you've experienced the same.
I usually go in the right lane, swing around the buses and get out. I know what you're talking about, but if you picture one lane, buses, accident, now there's no alternative.
Thank you.
Commissioner, one of the things I wanted to ask you about, too, I, I've traveled that thousands of times in the past 45 years, and one of the things I've seen many times is you'll have someone turning left in the center lane, and you'll have a bus stopped in the right lane and creating kind of a tricky obstacle, unless you're going to use that narrow sidewalk, which is in pretty bad repair. So what, help me out, that idea of a smooth-flowing, single-lane, perhaps with bus turnouts or something like that, would that, are there any kind of mitigations that would make that single lane--
Well, I was going to suggest a bus turnout, it's come up several times in my little conversation here, that they do, you know, they stop, wait, and everything stops behind. Picture one lane, you can't get around it, that's not going to work. But if they're, if they can get off, assuming they can get back on without a big crisis, that, that would, that kind of thing would help.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Roger Hall, followed by Patty Caswell and Greg Parker.
Good evening. My name is Roger Hall, H-U-L-L. My wife Bonnie and I live at 1658 Court Street Northeast. We've been in residence there since 1980. Bonnie led the effort to nominate the area to the National Register of Historic Places in the 1980s, and it was duly entered into the National Register in August of 1987, so we're coming up on the 31st anniversary of its listing. So it's a fairly established asset at this point. As you well know, the south boundary of the historic district is the alley, and in the case of several lots where there is no alley, the lot lines running parallel to Court and State Streets between 13th Street and Mill Creek. A long-established residential neighborhood lies to the east of Mill Creek as well, paralleling State Street, and it is this south edge of the neighborhood, the historic district and the rest of the neighborhood, and its immediate proximity to the proposed State Street Corridor Plan that caused us and our neighbors to be concerned about the scale and placement of structures that this new zoning would permit along the north side of State Street. Our concerns fall into several areas, and these have been and will be explored by others, but in brief, they are building height, building setbacks from the alley, effective screening between the corridor area and the neighborhoods and alley traffic. It is our understanding that the federal grant to study and propose a State Street Corridor Plan allowed for the possibility of several multiple-use zones, although only the two were included in the, in the proposal, MU1 and MU2. As Juliana Inman mentioned, our neighborhood is suggesting an additional zone, MU3, for portions of the north side of State Street, an MU zone to replace a portion of the proposed MU1. And in my written testimony, I made a typo, so what I meant to say was, an MU3 zone to replace a portion of their proposed MU1, and perhaps part of MU2 as well, would mitigate, if not entirely solve, the issues that concern us. Finally, State Street is a state highway, and thus the corridor project falls within the purview of the Oregon Department of Transportation. ODOT guidelines call for a Section 106 review of potential impacts of highway projects on historic resources. For various reasons, a Section 106 review has not been completed in this case. It is our belief that a carefully designed MU3 addition to the plan would lessen the need for the ODOT review and would render that issue moot. Bonnie and I and our neighbors hope you will take the time to seriously consider an amendment to the proposal plan, the proposed plan, an amendment that would enhance State Street development and protect historic resources at the same time, development and historic preservation being equally of importance, we believe, to the livability and the sheer delightfulness of living in Salem. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service to the city.
Counselor Lewis had a question?
Yeah, thanks for coming down. My, my question is what we, one thing we heard tonight is the, the One Neighborhood Association is fine with the taller buildings, and I don't know if that means 55 or 65 feet, and you would prefer, I'm assuming, to have the, the other side of the street be reduced to 45 feet?
Right.
If there were buildings on the other side of the street that were in fact 65 feet tall, what effect would they have on the shadow issue?
Well, I think they would be 55 feet, is what MU1 is calling for, 55. But of course, it's across a street that's 96 feet wide or maybe not quite, it's quite a distance from, from the north side of Court Street, north side of State and Court Street. But I myself did not conduct the shadow studies, so it's hard for me to be very detailed about this.
One of the, one of the questions I had, Professor Hall, when I was reading your testimony, your mention of sort of the impacts on Court and on Ferry or Mill, I can't remember which one, I would assume Ferry. Do you have any concerns about the traffic impact of the diversion that could occur, the filtration into the Court Street? I'll just stay with the north side, the Court Street neighborhood that could occur with a road diet?
Well, I didn't discuss the south of State Street because I don't know that area very well. I'm sure there would be some traffic impacts increases on Court Street and probably Schumeketa as well, not to mention the north-south streets that intersect with those streets within the district and within the neighborhoods. I guess I am confident that it would be not extreme impact. I'm also confident that we could restripe the street back to four lanes if it did prove to be a total gridlock of some sort. I would also add that 17th Street is a hybrid, you know, it's, has been since the 80s and it works quite well.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is we looked at that traffic study Ms. Kim showed us indicated what about-- about a 2,000, maybe a little over 2,000-car deficit in terms of the capability of the road diet to handle the traffic volume. They gotta go somewhere, and I would assume they go to the closest place to go. And I've been somewhat concerned about Court Street, Ferry Street, Mill Street, and the impacts that would have, understanding that the two on the south aren't yours, the two on the north are.
It seems to me that a continuous lane through traffic with a center turn lane would do a lot to keep the traffic moving, perhaps not as fast, but keeping it moving.
Yeah.
And I think that's the most important thing, not stop.
Okay, okay. It doesn't sound like a big concern to you, so, Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. Following up on that question, Mr. Hall, I know that Court Street at the western end, before you get to the railroad tracks, is blocked off, so there's no through traffic. Is that also true on Shametka?
Yes, but it's at a different block.
Okay.
At 14th Street.
Okay.
And those are the western limits of the historic district.
Okay, so, anybody who wanted to, going west, wanted to turn right and get on one of the alternative street, will learn after one time that they're gonna have to get back on State Street again.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Until it's removed by the next council, is that the one you meant? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty Caswell.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and City Councilors. My name is Patty Caswell. I reside at 1474 Court Street. Thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight and provide some input. Tonight, I am speaking in support of the road diet that was recommended by staff. I believe it is critical to the plan's success. I was surprised and disappointed when I attended a planning commission meeting to hear two commissioners speak out against the provision of bike lanes generally in the city of Salem, specifically expressing their concern over the, about the Minto-Brown Bridge, which, in my opinion, is an accomplishment for which the council should be very, very proud, and as well as all of us who call Salem home. It's just been a phenomenal addition to our community. As Ms. Kim mentioned earlier, the plan that has been talked about, the corridor-street plan, has been years of culmination, outreach, strong staff work on the city's part, which I think should be commended. And I'm just here tonight to urge the council to make the right decision and support the road diet as recommended.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Councilor Lewis?
Yeah, I hate to put it this way, but where do the 2,000 cars go during the peak hour every day?
I don't know. I don't have an answer for that. But I mean, Court Street is wide, it's a wider street. We do get cars coming down there. But I, I mean, in looking at the 20 years from now, that's not gonna, that problem isn't gonna solve itself, so...
Councilor Anderson.
Thank you very much for coming down and testifying tonight. I note from your address that you are east of where the proposed hybrid would end, that it would end at 17th Street, and you're on the east side of 17th?
No, I'm close to 14th Street.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, right now, you back up to what the hybrid would be?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Great. Craig Parker, followed by Kirk Leonard, followed by Joan Lloyd.
Okay, my name is Craig Parker, and I live at 1496 Court Street, which is right opposite of 15th on Court. And I'm here to talk about the alleys in a little more detail because it's a particular concern to myself and my wife. And also wanted to say to the council, thank you very much for the many opportunities to express our opinions at the outreach meeting, so, thank you for that. So, in this picture, actually, this is my house right here. And so, there is an alley...
Sir?
Yeah.
You need to mic it a little.
So, this is my house right here. There's actually another house behind mine that you don't see. This is what I call the parallel alley, which runs north-south. And then the east-west alley is behind our house that runs this way from 14th to almost 17th, actually to 16th roughly. And specifically, to talk about the first alley, which runs parallel, it's only one-car length width-wide. It narrows, I'm sorry, let's talk about the parallel one back here. It runs parallel to State and Court Streets, only one-car width-wide. It narrows and intersects with a second perpendicular alley, which is this one here, has residential driveways accessing it in the back of the houses along Court Street. And it also has some encroachment by some private property that goes into the alley in a couple places. There is currently no buffer zone with any trees or shrubs or anything between the alley and the commercial properties in the back. And it's interesting, a lot of people park along the alley and back of the current buildings, which actually blocks some of the alley access for traffic. This alley here runs between 1496 and 1518, which is over there. It's also one-car width-wide, and it's constantly in use during the workweek by traffic that's going in to park at the commercial buildings. It also has three residential driveways, mine, my neighbor's, and the neighbor on the left-hand side has a driveway. So, my concerns are additional alley traffic, particularly by dumpsters and trashes, trash trucks, blocking the access to the garages, encroachment of parking into the alley, private residences being blocked from parking and backing out of their garages. So, I'm making two suggestions. One, establish a third MU zone for State Street between 14th and 17th. And secondly, prohibit multifamily and commercial use of the alleys by restricting use to multifamily under three units only. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Could you help me out on that one? That appears that that alley is perpendicular and goes into State Street. Am I seeing that right?
It goes into the properties on the north side of State Street, yes.
There, it cuts all the way through to State?
No, it doesn't cut all the way through.
It looks like it on that picture.
You can actually make a left, when you go through the alley, you can make a left turn, and then you'll see a parking lot, and then you can get to State.
Yeah, I know that. That's why I wondered. I know that house, I know the house behind it. I've known people that have lived there over the years. And I didn't remember it cutting through to State, but that's what that picture seems to represent.
Uh, no.
No, okay.
There'll be a building, with the new zoning, there'll be a building.
Okay, this is a building on the north side of State. Okay, I'm getting it.
Correct, looking south. You're standing at Court Street looking south.
Big building, huh? Yeah. Yeah, no, I see. Okay. Great. Ah, Councilor Kaisner.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. You had made a comment, I just wanted to make sure I have this correct. You are proposing a MU3 zone to just be applied between, on State Street between 13th and 17th Streets?
14th and 17th.
14th and 17th?
In other words, in place of the MU1.
Why, why just between those streets?
Because, that's because of the alley.
Because of the alley?
Because of the alley issue.
Okay. And particularly about...
And also the shadowing as well.
So, the alley issue in particular, though, for traffic, is that what you're...
Uh, traffic and blocking garages and blocking access by the residences.
So, your MU3 zone would contain...
The language that says the alley can only be used for private residences or multifamily up to three units.
Okay.
Cannot be used for commercial.
So, it's really just about the alley?
That's my, that's my concern.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Great, thank you very much. Kirk Leonard, followed by Joan Lloyd. There you are.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm Kirk Leonard. I live in Ward II, three blocks from State Street, so this is my neighborhood we're talking about. I've been a participant in these processes since 2013, when the comprehensive plan changes were contemplated. And I gotta thank Eunice and Lisa, they've done an incredible job, and all the other cities you have that have contributed this to, there's just too many to name. I support the new MU zoning. I sincerely hope it can accomplish what it's attempting to, and that is to make redevelopment and redevelopment investment easier to do. I hope it works. I wouldn't like to focus on the road diet between, road diet question between 17th and 25th, because I think it's important in revitalizing the area. I don't perceive that you could have a walkable, attractive, you know, pedestrian-friendly set of developments happening with a mini freeway running through. I, you know, it's just, the traffic is just gonna kill it. And it needs turnouts for buses, it needs some bike lanes, it needs to recognize that the future needs to be different. And so, I hope, speaking for myself, I wish that the road diet would go the full distance. The 56, 54-foot roadway, I mean, right-of-way, is just not gonna, just doesn't support a fully-functional four-lane road, and the things we're trying to create with it. So, I think we're fooling ourselves when we think that we can have this walkability and pedestrian-friendly and all that stuff with a continuation of the four-lane road. And I don't think that an additional 10 feet or an additional 15 feet is gonna change that. As long as you have four lanes, you're gonna be, it's gonna be like a chasm that there's no crossing. I mean, the new crosswalks will help, thank you, and I hope they come no matter what the choices are made. But the best choice from my perspective is the road diet for all of the other values that it can bring. So...
Are you done?
I am.
Okay, Councilor Anderson.
Thank you for coming down, Mr. Leonard. The study as proposed, that is, the hybrid study, my understanding is, the goal and the recommendation is the road diet all the way to 25th. But for various reasons, some of which I understand might be funding available to do it, it's proposed that it would be phased in, that is, due from 12th to 17th first, and then upon completion of that and opportunity for study of that, then extend it to all the way to 25th. So, I guess my question, if you were looking at the hybrid, or you were looking at the proposal, well, the hybrid with the goal of eventually getting to 25th, or the proposal coming from the planning commission, which is to keep it four lanes all the way through, where would you come down on that issue? If you were faced with the planning commission proposal of four lanes, or the staff proposal of a hybrid with the ultimate goal being a street diet all the way?
The point I'm making, Counselor, is that I want road diet the whole distance.
Okay, okay.
I don't wanna have to choose between those two alternatives, which I don't consider will get the job done.
Well, I guess you're lucky then, Mr. Leonard, 'cause we're gonna have to choose. I was just wondering if you could give us some help on that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Lloyd, followed by Nancy McDaniel, followed by Patty Williamson.
I am afraid that mine would be repetitious, at least what I wrote here, because other people have mentioned the historic importance to not only the city of Salem, but the state and the county and the federal government. I do want people to know, well, and we have, the city has a historic planner and historic landmarks commission. And so, the city has invested money and time into historic resources, only one of which, of course, is our historic district. Along with this so-called privilege of being in a historic district comes conditions, and I'm not sure everybody understands that. And that is, we, if we wanna do something to the house, it has to be, go through a review process. We are only supposed to use materials that existed at the time that our house was put on the register. So, it can cost a lot more. We cannot use vinyl siding, we cannot use vinyl windows, vinyl fencing, that's not, you know, acceptable. And anyway, I just, and the state of Oregon has, the legislature has put in the special assessment where taxes are lowered so that we can afford to do these things to our homes to keep them up. And also, that Salem is considered one of six all-star heritage communities. So, I would ask that this be protected from some of these adverse impacts. And quite frankly, I think it should be all residential districts and not just our historic district. And that's it.
Joan, is your primary concern the height?
Yes.
And alleys? Would that be the two biggest ones?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy McDaniel, Patty Williamson, you're on deck.
My name is Nancy McDaniel. I'm the NEN land use chair, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of NEN. I live at 265 21st Street Northeast. So, NEN, the NEN Board voted to support the State Street corridor plan with two exceptions. One was, we also support the planning commission's recommendation for reduced parking requirements for retail uses. The second is that we would like to see the full, the road diet along the entire corridor. This ordinance has been a long time coming. Eunice mentioned the joint NEN-Cessna Neighborhood Plan, but even before that, back in 1995, there was the NEN-Cessna Neighborhood Action Plan. And that had a lot of the same recommendations here, mixed use in retail, retail office and residential altogether, and three lanes, a center turn lane and two travel lanes along State Street. So, this has been in the, in the works for over 20, 20 years, 30. There's a lot, there's a lot you can see that's wrong with State Street, and we believe a lot of that is due to the current zoning. It will never be an asset to the surrounding area under the zoning that exists there now, which is predominantly commercial office and commercial retail. They both allow standalone parking lots, which already dominate the area. They both allow drive-throughs, which are, which contribute to traffic problems on the street. Commercial office zoning in particular has extremely limited uses, and it creates these dead zones, you know, of buildings that aren't used on weekends or after, after 5:00 in the evening. And it predominates most of the area between 17th, between 14th and 17th is zoned commercial office right now. So, that, and that's the area that would be most likely for redevelopment under the market analysis done for this. So, we believe a lot of the advantages of this plan, it would allow a broad mix of uses that would create a vibrant, walkable area and encourage development along the corridor. It would not allow drive-throughs, it would not allow standalone parking lots. Buildings would be next to the sidewalk, which create street-level interest and make it more walkable. The parking would be at the side or the rear of buildings, which again, would make the street, would make it more pedestrian-friendly. And the street design would create wider sidewalks and increase buffering from traffic. I'd like to talk about the road diet. Alternative two was the road, the full road diet along the entire corridor. Both neighborhood associations support the full road diet. As I mentioned before, it was also in that 1995 plan. And 65% of the attendees at the public workshop supported the road diet. I looked at some of the project documents, there's a lot here, but there's one that's called Tier Two Evaluation of the Street Design Alternatives. And the alternative two, which is the full road diet, has, comes out on top of, in a lot of areas when measured against the criteria. Surprisingly, one of these areas where it was the best alternative, the best performance... Surprisingly, one of these areas where it was the best alternative, the best performing alternative, was it would minimize adverse impact, impacts on traffic flow and intersection operations. It says, according to this document, it would allow the quickest vehicle travel time along the corridor. I'm not a travel, traffic engineer, but I believe a lot of this would be, as other people have pointed out, because you don't have traffic-changing lanes. You've got, plus, there would, as a traffic engineer said, there would be right lane movement, I mean, right lane. It would also, it came out on top in, as far as discouraging speeding, providing pedestrian facilities, reducing conflicts among the travel modes, consistency with the neighborhood plans. Our concern also is that with a phased approach, the area west of, east of Seventeenth may never see the road diet. I wanted to say one last thing about the pedestrian facilities, and that is, Eunice showed a slide of pedestrian crossings that are planned at Nineteenth and Twenty-first, I believe. That's it.
Did Nancy get five minutes? Okay. Sorry.
It was fast.
Counselor Anderson, it is fast.
You referred Ms. McDaniel to something called the preferred land use option and Tier Two Evaluation. Is this the document?
Uh, Evaluation of the Street, it's Tier Two Evaluation of the Street Design Alternatives.
Okay, okay. I'll be asking a question about that when it comes to it. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Oh, I see it. It's this one.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what happens when you have too many documents.
Counselor Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned that you wanted, you, you supported an amendment to the recommendation regarding parking. Could you go over that again, what your, what your recommendation is and the reasons for that recommendation?
Okay, this was the Planning Commission's recommendation to reduce the parking requirement for retail uses, and that's consistent with the Neighborhood Association Plan we wanted to see. And it all, we also felt that it would encourage, as Eunice said, encourage retail to, to more retail uses in the, along the corridor.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis.
Hi, thanks for coming down tonight. I need to ask the same question. It's my understanding, what I've heard, is that with the full road diet, there will inevitably be automobiles that will choose not to use State Street as their east-west travel lane. Where would you see, I've heard as much as two thousand cars in rush hour, where would you see those cars going?
Well, they may go on the side streets, and we recognize that, but we also think that's, you know, traffic, good traffic engineering can deal with, can, can be used for traffic I don't think the city has really explored all the alternatives for traffic calming on residential streets.
Okay.
Counselor Casey.
Hi, Nancy. Did Nen at all discuss the building height conversation?
Yes, we did. And what we decided, we decided just to say we support the plan. We discussed that, and I, and I pointed out that by saying that was tacit approval of the fifty-five-foot level.
Okay, thanks.
Patty, and then Michael Slater.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Patty Williamson, and I am the President of the Salem Association of Realtors, speaking on behalf of our over nine hundred and fifty members in support of the State Street Corridor Proposal. Thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight on this important project that will contribute to the vibrancy of an era central to Salem's downtown core. I also want to thank some staff that came to visit our Government Affairs meetings that we've been holding as we have been doing as Realtors do in protecting homeownership. We wanted to do our due diligence, so we knew what position, so thank you for putting up with us. Our association has submitted written testimony, so I will keep my comments brief. As Realtors, we work with Salem residents on a daily basis, people who are not just looking for a home, but are looking for a livable community, one that is safe and secure, has affordable housing and transportation options, cultural and recreational opportunities, all things that contribute to a community's quality of life. Our clients want a vibrant community, which is why our association has strongly supported the recent police facility bond measure, the library improvements bond measure, and most recently, the Salem Kaiser School District Bond Measure. We support the adoption of the two new mixed-use zones, the Mixed Use One and Mixed Use Two, to encourage a more vibrant, pedestrian-friendly, mixed-use development area. However, any adopted plan should take into consideration State Street's intended purpose of accommodating regional and not just local traffic. As Salem continues to grow, we ask that you not adopt any street design proposal that would give up the opportunity to be able to expand State Street to its full major arterial definition by giving up any right-of-way designations or implementing zoning that would prevent expansion of State Street from ever being an adoption or an option. Traffic flow contributes greatly to a community's livability. We want the residents of Salem to be able to easily commute to and from their homes, to their jobs, or to school without having to sit in gridlocked traffic if it's unavoidable. We urge you to keep the big picture of our entire community in mind during your consideration of this project. Thank you very much for your time this evening and for all the work that you do and for the consideration of our comments.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, Michael Slater, then Jess Armus.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, councilors and staff. My name's Mike, well, I'm gonna share the podium for a minute. Sorry. Okay, thanks. So, good evening, Mayor Bennett, councilors and staff. My name is Michael Slater, I'm a resident of Ward Seven. As you consider changes to the, as you consider changes to State Street that will increase residential density, encourage pedestrian and bike travel, and stimulate commercial activity, I encourage you to include a place for public green space in your vision of the State Street Corridor. Fortunately, there is a half-acre parcel of land that is not only available today, but offers a number of benefits. As you may be able to see from the picture, there is a lot that fronts State Street between Nineteenth and Twenty-first Streets. The lot outlined in red is for sale, and the lot outlined in blue is an existing city park. This lot has a number of advantages. It is vacant, and it is for sale. The price is modest, with the current estimated value of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. It is in a floodplain and has a history of flooding. This fact, this fact makes it more appealing for green space and stormwater green infrastructure than, than for commercial or residential development. In fact, cities and counties around the country have been purchasing and removing structures from flood-prone lots and replacing them with green infrastructure to better manage stormwater. It provides for public access to Mill Creek. We are very fortunate here in Salem to have twenty-seven miles of urban streams flowing through our community, but much of that is inaccessible because of steep banks or private ownership of the stream frontage. The lot is visually interesting because it's located where Mill Race splits off from Mill Creek and where the city maintains a salmon weir. Finally, we now have plenty of evidence that thoughtful, well-designed public green spaces contribute to the economic revitalization efforts. I would encourage you to take a look at this proposal, and thanks for the opportunity to speak on it.
And it's clear. And that'll be the last time we do that, okay?
I'll take it.
That came, that came right out of the next person's time. It's a terrible thing to do. Go ahead, Tom.
This is more of a comment than questions for Mr. Slater, but I know in past speaking with Lisa and Eunice, I've discussed, and I've also discussed with the city manager and with Director Fernandez, the possibility of some sort of emphasis on some sort of urban canoe route going through there. So I at least would be very interested in further exploration of this lot, especially if the price is what Mr. Slater says it is. So I would hope at some future point, we could have some discussion about that.
We'll, we'll talk about it as soon as we get down with the public comment.
Right.
And you're canoeing, and you wanna put a bike, what do you wanna do on this thing? Swim it, or?
Just canoe.
Yeah. Jess, you're up.
My name is Jess Armus, I live on two sixty, Twenty-third Street Southeast. Most of what I would be asking and commenting on has already been said. However, we do have concerns about using alternative routes through a neighborhood association. The problem on it is Twenty-third Street is already, you, you can put more traffic on that, and it is not well-regulated. We are concerned about the children and the, the speeding that goes through there now. And Ferry Street is pretty narrow, too. I drive Ferry Street down to Seventeenth, cars parked on both sides. You have to really watch it for oncoming traffic to make sure that there is room, and one has to stop and wait before you can continue down Ferry Street on it. Ferry Street dead-ends into Twenty-third Street, so you're not gonna be able to cross, you're gonna have to go back to State Street if you used Ferry Street as an alternative route through the neighborhood. So that's a major concern, plus, we also have concern for the trees, as you know, and, but they also have an effect on traffic going down Twenty-third Street. And when we first moved there in seventy-two, parking was allowed on both sides, and that was a real interesting process because city buses at that time was running down Twenty-third Street, and it, it became a pretty dangerous situation for particularly children.
Thank you very much. John, I can't make this out, Mangum? Followed by Darren Brightman.
My name, my name is John Mangini, I live at fifteen ninety-eight Court Street, and I, I wanted to come here tonight just to thank you, because you guys really do want input. You're brave people, and thank you for doing that. A couple things. I was thinking, I'm quite impressed, these are observations, I'm impressed with the people that are living in this area that's gonna be developed, and they're not standing up and being irrational or saying, not in my backyard, they're saying, yes, literally in my backyard. They're asking for very little. Part of zoning, and the very primary purpose of zoning, is not to have adverse impact on new development with existing. You can simply, you can simply solve that problem by lowering some height restrictions, and also by considering not allowing the use of that alleyway for the new development. Second thing I'd like to say is that, don't assume that this development is not gonna have a negative impact. We have parking problems now. In our area between Thirteenth Street and Seventeenth, you may not realize, we have very few driveways, we have more multifamily residences than we do single-family residences, and we share our parking spots, we get along. We're gonna have to share more. That traffic's gonna come in and wanna park, and for the new developments, they're gonna have to go somewhere, but we're willing to share that. And just think, people aren't being irritated, they're saying, yeah, I don't mind not parking in front of my house, I'll just carry the groceries a little further. So good luck, and just remember, you got some good people here. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, John. Darren Brightman, followed by Casey Quillanin. Or Kay Quillanin?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm Darren Brightman, fourteen ninety-eight Ferry Street Southeast, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Southeast Salem Neighborhood Association. As, as Nancy has already pointed out, we have been working together for a good twenty-five years on State Street, not necessarily us personally, but our neighborhood associations have, and me only for ten years. And speaking specifically, our written testimony, which you folks have, gave you a rundown of the different plans that have been adopted and have been done over the years. And as, as Nancy mentioned, State Street was a focus back in nineteen ninety-five. Specifically, the ninety-five plan said it's not pedestrian-friendly, there's too much speeding, traffic is too fast, there are no bike paths, there are no crosswalks, there are no center turn lanes. Sound familiar? It sounds awfully, pretty much exactly what we had when the, we did the Nen-Cessna Neighborhood Plan, where we set a goal specifically to revitalize State Street as a vibrant, mixed-use corridor that encourages pedestrian activity, is safe and attractive, creates a distinctive sense of place, and serves it as an asset to surrounding neighborhoods. Now, I'm sorry, now, I'm sorry to say that just slightly widening a sidewalk with traffic moving by at forty miles an hour this far away from you is not going to create a pedestrian-friendly distinctive envi, well, distinctive, but not in a good way, environment. I would strongly recommend, people who drive State Street all the time, and I do, walk it, especially, especially east of Seventeenth Street, where you have a narrow sidewalk and you're immediately next to traffic that is moving very fast. I'm sorry, even though it's a thirty zone, it's typically moving about forty to forty-five miles an hour, especially the westbound traffic, and that's not going to get you the, the sidewalk cafes that people want. No one wants to sit next to that. So obviously, where I'm headed with this is, Cessna is in full support of the full road diet, and as Nancy mentioned, we're also in support of the zoning with the reduced parking requirements.
Any questions for Darren? Counselor Lewis?
I'm, I'm sorry, but just hypothetically, I, I drive State Street, I can't get out at Seventeenth and walk to the rest of the way, so I'm gonna have to drive where I'm going each day. What street would you have me use? 'Cause I'm convinced now that State Street needs to be left alone, and I just need a place to get east and west, so what street would you have me take?
You can certainly use State Street. I don't think it needs to be four lanes to have the capacity, as long as we have bus pullouts, as long as we have right-turn lanes. If we do the mitigations, if we reduce the number of driveways on State Street, reduce the number of turning movements, I think if we really explore creative mitigation, we will not have a significant loss of traffic.
Okay.
So you're, Ms. Brightman, your reduction of driveways on State Street, then you would have them using the alleys to get in and out of the?
Right now, many of the businesses on State Street have individual, single, per, single driveways for each business. A lot of that could be dealt with in the course of redevelopment with cross-access agreements, so you don't have everyone having their own driveway. And also, coming off the side streets everywhere, you're not supposed to be putting driveways onto arterials, you're supposed to put them onto the side street, so focus more the driveways in that way.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Casia Quillanin, there she is, followed by David Gray Smith, followed by Gerald Thorpe.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilors, I'm Casia Quillanin. I think you all know me by now. I'm a property owner in the Court Street Historic District and have been for well over thirty years, and as such, I have also participated in the nineteen ninety-five study, planted trees that are now growing, growing up on State Street, and done a number of other things. And as everybody knows, I've been a fanatic proponent of mixed-use zoning for many, many years. And what I would like to say is, I really believe in this State Street proposal. It's finally coming together. Thirty years of working on this is long enough, it's time to get moving. So, a couple of concerns that have arisen, one is, has been expressed here a bit of time, about cut-through traffic, particularly onto Fourteenth, which is being used as a major cut-through already between State and Center Street, where the Safeway is. And then also, you have the issue of that terrible turnaround, the U.S. Bank Building on Thirteenth. So it goes Thirteenth, and then it makes that little zig onto Chamekada in order to be able to get out onto the State Street. So I would hope that during the traffic planning portion of this proposal, that those things be looked at again, and some kind of mitigation be taken to alleviate those two problems. As far as the issue of where is all the traffic going to go, I started reading traffic studies on new urbanism, mixed-use zoning planning. on new urbanism, mixed-use zoning planning, twenty, twenty-five years ago, and virtually every city that's ever studied this problem has said, you reduce the lanes in the areas where you don't want congestion, because what happens is the slower the traffic moves, the more you can get through. The faster the traffic moves, the fewer cars get through. So if you reduce the lanes, you're reducing the speed of the cars, but they are all moving at a regular pace for the reasons that many people have just discussed, which are the right-hand turn lanes, the left-hand turn lanes, the pullouts for the bus. And that will work just fine, and that will create this mixed-use, livable, sustainable center that we're, something that's beautiful, and we really need a beautiful entrance into downtown Salem. So let's make it happen. Go, guys.
David Gray Smith, Gerald, oops, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Casia, for your comments. Can I ask you about your building height? What do you think about the building heights that you live in the Court Street area?
I don't live there, I own property there.
You own property there, yeah.
I actually did live there for quite some time while I was going to law school, and I decided I liked it so much, I bought a building in the middle of it. So actually, I have a house that's considered primary contributing. In any event, the building height, I will support whatever the neighborhood as a whole says that they think is appropriate. That's all I can tell you about that. My particular piece of property is, according to the shadow video that we watched, would be just outside the shadow zone. I was concerned earlier today because I had looked at the current maps, the proposal maps, and it looked like the proposal went right through the middle of my backyard. I was not happy about that, so I called up Eunice to talk to her, and she reassured me, and I'm very happy with the presentation that was given here tonight that explained all that. But the building height, I think the Neighborhood Association has adequately addressed that.
So I'm understanding, you're saying, whatever NEN is supporting, the Neighborhood Association is kind of, is what you?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the Historic District, I mean, I see them all as, that's my home base, I see them all as one piece.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for coming down.
You bet.
On one of your rare visits to the Council.
Anybody got a cot?
When you say you support, I gather you support the staff proposal, and that would be the hybrid as opposed to street diet all the way, or as opposed to planning commission proposal?
Well, let me explain what I mean by that, which is, I see the hybrid proposal as a good, practical, compromise first step, and I think it is necessary to get this project going, or it will never happen. So that's, you know, if in a hypothetical world, if we only had two choices between full on four lanes, the way, keep it the way it is, and the road diet, I would go for the road diet. But right now, I think the hybrid is an excellent, as I said, an excellent, practical way of getting the project going.
Casia, could you put on your Parks and Rec chair hat real quickly?
Yes, sir.
I was real taken with Michael Slater's idea of a green space on that, I believe it's on that property next to Muchas Gracias, kind of right along there. I thought that was really an interesting, did you have the same reaction? I saw it as a small part.
I think it's a grand idea.
Okay.
And also, we maybe want to acquire Muchas Gracias, simply for the historic reason that I understand it was the, well, first of all, it's a wonderful site, but it was, as I understand it, it was the downtown trolley turnaround.
Ah.
Location.
Okay.
So it has some historical value to it already.
So you think the Parks and Rec Board would look with interest at a proposal like that coming out of the study?
Well, I'll tell you what, Michael Slater tends to show up at Parks Board meetings on a regular basis, and I hereby invite him to come and make that proposal to the Parks Board.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
You have it publicly, Michael. Anything else?
No, I think we're done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. David Gray Smith, followed by Gerald Thorpe, followed by Leslie Paulson.
My name is David Gray Smith, and my wife and I live at nineteen ninety-eight Court Street.
No, you're going to have to come back to the mic and talk.
It's the big earthquake thing.
Come back to the mic and talk. Come back to the mic. There we go.
So anyway, my house is right here, this is that same very big, imposing building moving around, it might be just one, it's on rollers, but anyway. I very much appreciate the hard work that's gone into the State Street Corridor redesign proposal. Most of us agree, it needs to happen, but needs fine tuning to account for the adjacent residential neighborhoods along Court Street. Strong disagreements remain about slight differences in specifics. I'm offering a simple remedy to one of them, allowable building heights north of State. My remedy keeps the same floor space in the State Street Corridor plan by adding one floor south of State and subtracting one floor north of State. Doing so allows buildings on both sides of State enough sun for solar energy capture, both on their roofs and in their upper windows. At the same time, residents north of State would be relieved of one of our darkest fears, the fear of buildings looming over us and casting shadows on our springtime gardens and into our autumnal eyes and wintry windows. North of State is a residential neighborhood, including both the Court-Chameca Residential Historic District and East Footbridge. A stable, closely knit neighborhood of more modest homes resting over the Footbridge on the opposite bank of Mill Creek. Young families and older, motivated newcomers are buying in as its original owners and renters age out. Many of us want access to the sun and sky for both aesthetic and practical purposes. Think of a mixed skyline with scattered trees, distant, taller buildings, and lower roof lines in the foreground. Think solar energy applications anywhere in this view. As things stand, the affected land south of State has more existing retail institutional use and occupants much less sensitive to taller buildings. Remember, the Southeast Salem Neighborhood Association has approved allowing taller buildings on the south side of State. Altering the plan to eliminate its fearful symmetry would open up more pleasing prospects to everyone, adjacent current residents, people coming to new digs in the corridor, possibly ambitious architects signing up for the aesthetic and financial potential of less uniform outlooks. Let me restate my State Street notion. Adding one story south of State and subtracting one story north of State would please the adjoining neighbors on both sides, may lure more ambitious architects to work in the zone by presenting prospects both high and low.
Thank you, David. Very good. Any questions? Yes, Counselor Lewis?
Well, I like your idea, in fact, I was going to bring it up. The thing that you didn't mention, that I think it also accomplishes, is when you look at this from an economic development standpoint, we would end up with basically the same square footage, it's just there would be different heights on different sides of the street. So there'd be the same opportunity from an economic development standpoint, from a residential standpoint, but yet we could address the shadowing issue. Thank you.
Seems like we've arrived together at a good idea.
Yeah.
It was your idea.
Very good, thank you, David, very much. Gerald Thorpe, Leslie Paulson, Ron Ped. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Gerald Thorpe, I live at five sixty-two Twenty First Street Northeast, and what I would characterize, there's a lot of issues about traffic. Most of what's been discussed has been the east-west traffic, primarily on State. What I would suggest is there could be unintended consequences on the side streets. Living on Twenty First and those who are over on Twenty Fourth Street will know that there's a lot of traffic that goes between State and Court, or State and Center, and that traffic is going on streets that are intended for residential use, not for commercial traffic. On Twenty First Street, there's parking on one side only, and if people are parked, if cars are parked there, you'll find that getting from State to Center can be a real challenge, and people are having to pull over and let the other car go by. My request to you is, please be aware that as cars emerge on State and reach Twenty Fifth Street, and they see traffic backed up, what they're going to be looking to do is find a faster way to get into the city, and they're going to be using these side straights, both north and south, and our neighborhoods are just not designed, their streets are not designed for that kind of additional traffic. So please be aware of that and take that into your plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, Leslie, Ron Ped, Laura Buell.
Okay, hi, my name is Leslie Paulson, I live at nine three zero Garnet Street Northeast, and I have a couple comments on the State Street Corridor plan. Today, State Street is a concrete freeway that divides northeast neighbors from southeast neighbors. It is a freeway where cars zip through to the downtown and to West Salem. At one time, State Street used to be a beautiful maple-lined trees that had its trees chopped down when it was widened. Nothing flourishes on this street. In the evening, it is dead, in the daytime, it is dead. It is dangerous to walk on and to bike on. This plan aims to revitalize the street with pedestrian-friendly amenities by creating incentives for safety. It has the plans to buffer pedestrians and bicyclists from cars. There is a potential for development for artist workspaces and to support the creative entrepreneurial community. Please support the work of the planning folks with Eunice, and who did an absolutely amazing job with all the workshops and the participation from the community, and transformed this street from an annoying shortcut to West Salem and Downtown into a beautiful adventure into Salem where people will want to come and visit, and to stay, and to explore. And thank you for listening to all these comments.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. Any questions? Okay. Ron Ped, Laura Buell, Tom O'Connor.
Good evening, Councilors, Mayor, my name's Ron Ped, I reside at sixty-eight fifty Burnett Street Southeast. I happen to own the park that everybody has. I had other plans.
Boy, we're looking forward to seeing you.
We'll talk afterward.
Yeah.
I want to thank staff for their effort, and it's an exciting prospect of what could happen on State Street. I'm concerned from a city scale about traffic. We need more lanes east-west, not less, and until, it can be dealt with in a comprehensive fashion, because Counselor Lewis indicated, and so did Commissioner Brantano, that, you know, we really do need those extra lanes, and they don't go away. We don't have a transit system that would accommodate that, and maybe at some point in time, the diet or the hybrid might be the right answer, but right now, the infrastructure's not there to make it work. The other issue that might be a good thing in the short term would be to maybe limit left-hand turns on Seventeenth Street from Twenty Fifth to Fourteenth, to maybe every four blocks. For example, a conversation would say maybe Twenty Fifth, Twenty First, Seventeenth, and Fourteenth, and that would go a long ways to eliminate that dangerous cut-over thing. Just create some turn pockets, so you'd have a hybrid of the major arterial where you could actually make some left-hand turns. Questions?
Any questions for Mr. Ped? Great piece of property there, that's.
Well, we'll talk about it.
Laura Buell, Tom O'Connor, Zoe, I just can't read the rest. Laura?
Good evening, my name is Laura Buell, I live at six nine five Sixteenth Street Northeast. That's near State Street, and I frequent many of the businesses along the street. I would probably go there more often, but I do find it stressful, unwelcoming, and at times, life-threatening, and that's not an exaggeration, to go there by foot or bicycle, which are the modes that I use most to get around town. In fact, I decided to leave the First Tech Credit Union and switch to a more pedestrian-friendly bank downtown after I had a close encounter with a car while I was trying to get money out of the drive-thru ATM there after hours. I'd like to express my support for most of the staff recommendation. This recommendation supports the NENSesna Plan, which is really important. There's been a great deal of discussion about the allowed height of buildings. I support staff's proposed heights, and if anything, increase them, not lower them. Density is necessary to get more residents and more foot traffic in the area. When people live near their destinations, automobile congestion goes down. Staff has proposed a reasonable middle ground, in most cases, lowering the maximum height from what is allowed now, and instituting step backs and setbacks from residential properties. The two exceptions to the staff recommendation, regarding the road diet, I disagree with the Planning Commission recommendation of no road diet, and I also support the full road diet as opposed to the half or hybrid, as it's being called. The Planning Commission was deaf to the public input received during the State Street Corridor planning process, which strongly supported the road diet along the study area. They were concerned with perceived automobile congestion, but the road diet is the best way to tame traffic and make State Street a civilized place for cyclists, pedestrians, shoppers, businesses, residents, and also automobiles, since the flow would be consistent and fast. If we, slow, rather, consistent and slow. If we want Salem to be a place that's great to live, rather than somewhere where we just build roads designed to get people out of town as quickly as possible because they can't stand to be here one minute, then the City Council should approve the full road diet. I also, though, do support the Planning Commission's recommendation to lower parking requirements for retail. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Any questions? Tom O'Connor, Zoe, and Zoe, I'll just get your last name wrong, and Keith Quick.
Distinguished Mayor and Councilors, I'm Tom O'Connor, I live on fourteen twenty Court Street Northeast. I was a member of the Stakeholder Advisory Committee, so we spent a lot of time working on this, and we're here to say an enthusiastic yes to the plan. We are YIMBs, yes in our backyard. I'm speaking on behalf of over sixty people who have signed this letter that we submitted and tested me. Previously, we submitted other tests to me as well, so I'm the kind of runner-up, my guy, my job here is to kind of summarize. We are saying yes to the plan. We even propose, because we want development, we want retail, we think there are, we support ten pieces of this plan that encourage retail and encourage development along the State Street thing. It was our idea to reduce the parking, we floated that with the Parking Commission. We said, we think your requirements for parking for retail are too high, you should reduce them. They said, oh, that's a great idea, we'll support that. So we are business-friendly, we're development-friendly. We think the plan, so we've been improving the plan all along with the work that we've been doing. We think the plan can be improved in other ways as well. We don't agree with the Planning Commission when they said, let's not go with the hybrid. We think the city is right about that, the city is proposing the hybrid. With extending it, we also agree that it needs to be extended, but probably in phases is the way to do it. The height you've heard a lot about, that's our big one. We think it's crazy to have these creepy buildings, I mean, that was the word described to use them, you saw that, you saw the thing, you saw that building step, even with the step back. It's not going to help, it's not going to make it a win. This is a win-win-win for everything in terms of the developers. There is no developer speaking here because they're getting everything, they don't have to have the reserved strip on the street, there's all sorts of benefits to developers. Give us a win in the neighborhood as well, we want the win for the vibrant neighborhood, but don't take away our livability and put us in shadow. It's silly, because that extra ten feet doesn't take away from the development properties. They still have all the development potential that they have, they're getting a boon with this. Don't take that away from us, it's not helping. This could be a win-win-win situation, that's what we're asking for. The other thing we need is those protections on that alley, that's the boundary of the Historic District. If you don't protect that alley first, you're going to crumble into the boundary of the Historic District, and you don't want that because you want to preserve the Historic District. Another point, NEN has never said they agree with the fifty-five-feet height. Don't come away from here, that's the same NEN saying, they've stayed quiet on it. Their first letter in our report said, we are concerned about the height, like the neighbors, and they've stayed mute on it, they have not said we support the fifty-five-feet height because it's contentious. We think you've got more flexibility, bring in more MU zones. Apparently, the original idea was to create MU zones that you could use throughout the city. Six of them was the idea at the start, you've only created two, create a third, or maybe a fourth, and have more flexibility that you can overlay across the whole city.
Thank you very much, Tom. Any questions? Yeah, Tom Anderson.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Connor.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Connor. You heard Mr. David Gregg Smith's proposal of taking one floor off of, north of State Street and putting one floor on south of State Street. What's your reaction to that?
I think it's a good one. I think it's a good idea. I think it would work, especially because Cessna seems to think that that's okay with them. So something about that seems to be appealing to people. I think that would help on our side of the street. That would be fine. Again, we're looking for flexible options that win-win-win.
Counselor Casey.
Thanks, Tom, for speaking. I just want to put this maybe into more plain language. We keep talking about heights, feet, and all of that, and it's kind of hard to visualize. When you say 45 feet, what are you visualizing? Is that a three-story building, a four-story? What, what is that?
That's four-story. 55 feet, we, we think 55 feet. You can, you can go five-story with 55 feet. Plus, we believe there's a 10-foot top on top that allows for building stuff on top. We think it should be 45 feet with a 5-foot screened-in area, so we're thinking four stories.
So you're thinking four stories?
Four stories.
And then screened in?
Yeah, screened in. So keep it, keep it, get the character. You, you, it's a whole thing, just that, we know there's going to be parking impacts on us and traffic impacts. We're prepared to accept that, because we trust the city will come in and ameliorate if, if it's necessary. So we know there's, there's deficits to us, but we want the developments, or we're open to that. It's a comprehensive plan, but make, make it, make it a plan that is beautiful. It's the State Street. It should be this jewel coming into the city, so make it something that is, you know, works everywhere. That's going to take a bit more time than we, we, we're not quite there yet, we're almost there. If we keep going, we'll get there.
May? The alley protections you're talking about, you're mostly talking about limiting those to non, or limiting those to just residential use, but not multifamily?
Basically, that's the simple answer. Make it, it's, it's a one-lane alley, keep it an alley and keep it for residential.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Zoe, and then Keith Quick.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Zoe Diaku, and I live at 917 13th Street Southeast, which is in the Cessna neighborhood. And I work on State Street at Roberts High School. As I've tried to improve my own health and my carbon footprint, I've increased my attempts at commuting by bicycle. I say attempt, primarily due to my fear of riding on this particular section of State Street and my frustration at the need for taking circuitous routes such as the proposed hybrid plan. On the other hand, when I'm driving, I can also attest to the traffic congestion on the sections without a turn lane. I'd also like to point out that according to the Oregon Department of Transportation map of Salem, State Street is neither a highway nor a major arterial, but rather, a minor arterial. As one of those people who is a data geek, I actually enjoy reading things like traffic engineering studies. And most of the studies that I've read from around the world cite that traffic flow actually decreases with addition of car lanes. Induce demand is what economists call it, when we increase the supply of something like roads, as it makes people want that thing even more, as the Association of Realtors has already very eloquently stated. If you want to truly increase traffic flow, then this hybrid plan will not accomplish that goal. And I also would like to thank all the people who have been putting in a lot of time and effort on evaluating all these studies and so forth.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Zoe, for coming down. Just to clarify, then, you're, to sound really clear where you're at, you want to, you, you would support a full road diet?
Full road diet, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, Keith Quick.
Mayor Bennett, counsel. My name is Keith Quick, and I'm a property owner at 1936 Ferry Street. And I'm speaking in support of the proposal. But I, I also think that we need to have a road diet, the full road diet through the, you know, whole corridor from 12th to 25th. State Street is not friendly for pedestrians right now. It's not family-friendly. And there's a lot of families who live in this area. There's, there's a lot of people who try to walk and try to cross State Street currently, and it's, you know, it's not, not a very pleasant thing to do currently. I, I'm really supportive of this idea of slowing down the traffic in that corridor and would fully support road diet and all the things that come with it. One, one thing that I did want to mention, because I heard a counselor ask a question, like, where, where would these cars go, who, you know, who would choose not to use State Street? My, my question is, where are those cars going? There's not a lot of residential between 25th and Lancaster. So where are those cars going that are using State Street? And is there an alternative route that currently exists that they could take? And I, I'm, I'm not really sure if there was a traffic study to see where those cars are going, but it, it doesn't seem like that section of State Street takes you anywhere but Lancaster Boulevard. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's everyone signed up. Anyone else want to? Yeah.
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Okay. Let's just line up and give your names and addresses.
I'm Jeff Leach. I'm at 265 Richmond, which is in the Cessna neighborhood. And I'm in support of the road diet, but I'm also in support of taking the first step of the hybrid model. The, currently, I walk, ride my bike, and on occasion commute on State Street at 5:00. What I've seen is on State Street, down by the State Capitol, you've got four lanes of traffic well underused. I cross the railroad tracks, headed east at 5:00. There's traffic, but there's plenty of room. And yes, once you cross 17th, things get a little bit tight for about 15 minutes. I don't really see the debate about the capacity of reducing lanes east, or, excuse me, west of 17th going up to the railroad tracks. I don't see that traffic currently. Once, once traffic turns from 17th and has east, yeah, that is subject to debate. Going forward in the future, things can change. The younger generation, they're not getting as many driver's licenses. That's been declining 20% a year for the last, you know, that's declined 20% over the last 10 years. So there's, yeah, and so what happens the next 10, 20 years as far as driving? That can change. But for now, the, the logic first step is to go with the hybrid plan from a traffic standpoint. Anyway.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, and thank you for coming down, Mr. Leach. If I'm not mistaken, you were on the State Street Corridor Advisory Task Force, were you not?
Yes, I was. And I had the pleasure of walking State Street with Anna, Anna Peterson, being shocked at, at what a miserable experience, walking on sidewalk next to busy State Street traffic.
So you're making your comments with somewhat larger, a greater depth, in-depth study of the issue because you've been on the, the commission?
Yes, I've been involved in the project from the beginning.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Ken Adams, and I live at 1695 Chamecahdis Street. And I wanted to address a couple of questions that came up. And one is, Court Street, I do not believe, will be used as a cut-through. There's too many places where it stops, not to mention 14th, but also 19th. Well, actually, 19th is Mill Creek. So that's a pedestrian bridge across Mill Creek at that point. Also, with 21st Street, it dead-ends. So Court Street will not be the one that's going to be used for people going westbound. Chamecahdis Street will be. And we have a number of people going up and down 25th at very high rates of speed. I hear complaints about that all the time. Now, as far as State Street is concerned, I once went to Muchas Gracias, and I would never do that again. It's way too dangerous biking over there. Cerdi, there was a bicyclist on State Street around 24th headed west. You wouldn't believe it, but people were trying to get around him, because he was going 10 miles an hour. Now, when we talk about being an arterial, bicyclist is going to be there. If we have four lanes, bicyclists are certainly entitled to be on that road, doing 10 miles an hour at best. Maybe Mr. Anderson can go a little bit faster, but most people won't go on State Street. But you're not going to be encouraging bicyclists once you get past 17th, that's for sure. It's way too dangerous. People do speed. When I went to the police academy a couple of years ago, I noticed a couple of times, policemen would say that they don't tick it until they're 10 miles an hour over the speed limit. So instead of a 30 mile an hour zone, you now have a 40, with people going even faster. So I would support a full diet on that road. It needs to be slowed down. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. You'd introduce yourself and your address.
Okay. Hello, and thank you. My name's Tom Franco. I'm a resident of Oregon for 30 years now. Been living here in Salem 14 years. Is it possible to put that photo back up? Because of the park? My house was in that photo, anyway.
Ah.
And I've mentioned that, yeah, right, the red part is the proposed park. And then right across the street and state on the north side, you see that empty, that big green spot, that's a big empty lot, too. And then right on Mill Creek, see, I live on Mill Creek, and go under that bridge at Muchas Gracias, there's a two-story building right there on the corner, it's been empty for decades. How long has that been empty? A big question I wanted to ask, but I didn't get was, a four-story building anywhere in that area, what kind of building is, who's going to develop a four-story building in that area? When you've got a two-story there, there are none. I can't see a three-story building going anywhere there. I don't, I'm not against it, but just tenants? Yeah, where they're going to park is a big problem. And if it's a retail or something, or what kind of business is going to survive there? It's a residential neighborhood. I've been there 14 years paying taxes, and I've seen a lot of stuff right there. And I walk my pit bulls around there just to make sure the traffic knows there are people who are not afraid to walk that street. And yes, it's dangerous, because they're going fast, and there's nothing. In foreign countries, traffic is lowered. You know, like, you know, I've visited Mexico, and now, the curbs, you're walking above the traffic. So yeah, if you're drunk and you fall off, that's your fault. But at least you know where traffic is. You know? It's simple, either guardrails or raise the sidewalk or something, but we'd put a lot of money into that bridge. And why, and Muchas Gracias, it wouldn't hurt to clean it up some. They've got new ones going up all over town. Why can't we renovate or at least make this one look more attractive? Because people coming into town, if the sun ain't hitting you at the sundown, yeah, it's not real pretty. But it is a beautiful place to live. So I am the self-appointed commander of Fiesta Flats, which is my perimeter, which is why I put up a fence to keep the homeless people out, and everything else that walks up and down that street. And I'm talking about some of those tenants right across the street, where there's two houses there, and you get a lot of foot traffic going by those two houses that are very clearly marked as monitored or whatever. There are known pedophiles living in those houses on the other side of State. Now, I don't want to develop any more of those, but I understand, yeah, they got to go somewhere. They have to live somewhere. And I don't mind having that traffic in my neighborhood. I'd like to keep, I like to keep it quiet, safe for everyone. It's a residential neighborhood. Put a park there, and I'll help make it, keep it clean and safe for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay.
One of my neighbors here. I can't hear you.
Hello. My name's Ed Naris. I live on State Street. I'm rather fond of the idea of the full diet all the way to 25th, because I hate when they come speeding through there, racing, because there's two lanes on one side. I want them to slow down. I want people to decide to go someplace else to go through. But I do have an idea why people are going down State Street. They're going down State Street because they live out in the country, and it's a major way to get out into the country. You get past Gordon, you're out in the country. And there's lots of houses out on State Street out in the country. They're pretty far apart, but there's lots of houses out there. There is also, after you pass Lancaster, there's a bunch of apartments. So a lot of people live in those apartments. That's where this traffic is going. Most people will stay on State Street if that's where they're going, even if we go on the road diet. Because basically, the center turn lane, that's a great idea, because then you don't have people going crazy. And that's what they do on State Street. So I'm for the full diet, but I understand why you just want to start slow and keep going, because you need to get people used to the idea. That's the basic reason for doing that. Well, anybody want to question me? Because I live on State Street. I've got a driveway that I almost never make a left onto State Street, because it is way too dangerous. And the last time I tried to, I nearly got hammered.
Uh-oh. Well...
So I don't do it no more.
Okay.
Unless the road is empty.
Okay. Which is rare.
Which, no, it's generally after about 10:30 until about 7:30.
Well, I'm not on there.
10:30 at night to 7:30 in the morning.
Well, Counselor Anderson's riding his bike on that street, right?
Ms. Reese, could you describe again how the cars go on State Street?
Crazy. You, you have somebody trying to make a left turn, and people go zoop, zoop, zoop around. And if you're turning onto there, you better be aware of those cars, because even if you're turning right onto State Street, it's dangerous. If you're turning left onto State Street, don't do it. Don't do it. It's suicidal.
Thank you for the good advice. Thank, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
My name is Noreen Weinland. I am here representing Sybil's Omelets that sits at State Street and 24th.
Great place.
The thing I find most interesting, I've been to Planning Commission meetings, and now this one, is that I'm not seeing or hearing from very many business owners on State Street. And I find that to be quite fascinating, since it's going to have a direct impact. Our concern is that in order to make these sidewalks, which are wider than the lanes of traffic, is that going to then reduce our parking by one-third? Because that's going to have to come from someplace to widen that, and I'm not sure they're going to tear the houses down across the street.
Yeah.
So I, I'm not sure that this has been addressed.
We'll find out. We'll ask for you.
Okay.
Okay, we will. That's a very good question. Because you've got a pretty substantial piece of frontage there that...
A, a third of our parking faces State Street.
Yeah.
So we're a business that's been in Salem for 35 years.
Yep.
We're proud of that. I just really wish we'd see more business owners here.
Well, thank you for coming.
My name is Richard Nelson, and I live in Piety Hill. Most people don't probably know where that is, because it was mostly demolished, but it's the area where the Capitol Mall expanded and destroyed all those Victorian mansions. So one of, I'm an urban planning nerd, and one of my favorite quotes about America is, "America is a great place to live if you're a car." you're a car." And I feel like State Street really represents that. I walk frequently and I take Amtrak to downtown Albany to work at U.S. Bank. And as I started that commute about six months ago, the only pedestrian section, which I'm not sure is part of the proposed plan, but the sidewalks interact with this section, is the wide sidewalk along the Amtrak line. It's kind of this mirage of safety because cars are allowed to drive down it. And they are very annoyed that there's humans walking on sidewalks. And they don't really watch out for people. Some do. But I just find that to be very much to the quote of, "America is a great place to live if you're a car." Because people don't like to walk on the other side of 12th Street. Because one section of it down near the old, further down is like three feet wide because they expand it into the sidewalk to, to make like a drive-through, you know? So I guess I would like to see safety for pedestrians and bicyclists. In Denmark, for instance, they actually like park the parked cars and leave a space between the sidewalk and the street. And the parked cars protect bicyclists. Because I know I'm interested in bicycling, but I am personally afraid of certain sections of Salem that I would have to cross and get hit. So I think that that would help people get out of their cars and that would reduce traffic. If people are also concerned with traffic, they could try living closer to where they work. America's very suburban, where America statistically walks the least out of any developed country in the world. And I would be, I would just add that to the world because I don't think underdeveloped countries are not walking. So I think we just need to stop creating another quote is, "A drive-in utopia," which is just lots of dead space of parking. And create like the walkable downtown pre-car districts of our beloved downtown, which actually has places for people to enjoy. I grew up in McMinnville and that is actually a very walkable district. It got second-best small downtown in America for the Parade Magazine competition. It, and it's very narrow and walkable.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions.
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is George Elkington and I live at 260 14th Street Northeast. I am Casey's tenant. And I have lived in that region that we have designated as the project area for probably 30-plus years. I lived at the Forum. I've lived on 14th Street. I've lived on 20th Southeast. And a couple of other places in the district. And I've ridden my bike for the entire amount and I'm still alive. I don't know how, but I am. Mostly because I never, ever rode my bicycle on State Street, ever. And I really work hard to avoid driving my car on State Street, except for Muchos Gracias is worth going to. And I won't walk there. I endorse the, by default more than anything, the full diet plan. I've seen it work in many cities. I grew up in Madison, Wisconsin, where a lot of that kind of experimentation happened in the '60s and '70s. And it worked really well in a town that's about the same size as Salem, that got a lot bigger, a lot faster than Salem is getting. The one-way street plan didn't work as well as they thought it would, but some of the other things did work pretty well. I think that the issue with the preservation of the historic district is an important consideration. It's one of the few pieces left of that, of the oldest part of town. And I live in one of the older houses, so I kind of would like to stay there. And I also live across the street from somebody here. Or at least somebody that owns something across the street. And I am the one, the one thing that I am concerned of is traffic. Traffic, especially in the cross streets, 14th, 17th, anywhere in between there, and the funneling of this supposed 2,000 cars. I, I am kind of having a hard time translating that going to the diet will actually create that 2,000-car surplus of cars that we need to get out of there. I don't understand how that, where that math came from, but... And I am concerned about the 14th Street and the 13th Street and the 12th Street and all the other cross streets as being susceptible to traffic. As the mayor knows, the 14th Street is a cutoff, a cut-through, and a pretty major one. And traffic planning hasn't dealt with some of that in the way I would like, like a light on Center. Because they haven't seen enough fatalities. And I don't think that should be their criteria. I think it should be the efficiency of traffic flow, not the deaths on the corners. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ron!
Good evening, Mayor.
It's good to see you.
City councilors and staff and all the neighbors who've came out with concerns. I live at 520th Street Northeast. State Street doesn't bother me except for 8 o'clock in the morning and 4:30 at night when the State Office Building's really empty out. One of the things I look at when I look at this complex, analogy in our neighborhood with this complex is taking a hose in your backyard and stepping on it. And you're putting all the pressure in one part of the neighborhood. And you're not letting that corridor function the way it should be, like a hose to come out of a sprinkler head and to water your garden appropriately. I don't think we would be here if this was proposed in just two-story buildings, like four locations down State Street. And another analogy to go with that, you have a convenience store at 14th and State. Got a convenience store at 21st and State. You have another convenience store at 24th and State. And there's no congestion. But each one of them is serving a little neighborhood all the way down. And I think if we were to come up with smaller complexes, this one here, I wouldn't want to see the balconies off the back of the building. Here is a utility easement. People are going to be looking at power poles and wires down the back. This way, you don't have people spying into the back of homes in the back. There's a reason why they bought their residential home in that neighborhood. This tall building, as mentioned, is going to cast a shadow when the sun's low in the winter time. I would like to see a improved State Street with a, what I would call a tree lawn between the street and a large pedestrian bike path, as proposed in southeast Salem right now. Something that separates the pedestrians from the traffic. It makes it a little bit more friendly. And as the neighborhood gets older, the houses are going to come down and you can attack that part of the neighborhood when it comes up. So I favor two-story buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, very much. Good to see you. Okay. No questions?
I just wanted to comment. My name's Angela Napp in Ward 1. On this woman, for example...
Could you say again, I apologize? Could you say your name and address again? Or you said your ward, Ward 1.
Ward 1.
But what's your name again?
Angela Ali.
Angela, okay.
This lady and her turning, and I've turned left onto State Street countless times and I've never had a problem turning onto, never had an accident on State Street trying to make a left-hand turn. And this, the self-proclaimed nerd, have you tried to buy a house close to where you work? Because I've been trying to buy a house in Salem for a number of years and they always get swept out from under me. There's a house on 17th between Chamecauta and Center. It was on the market an hour and it was sold. And there was a guy that asked, "Where are the people going on State Street when they're eastbound? Does anyone know about Gear Park? It's kind of on the corner of State and Hawthorne behind the National Guard Building." And that's where a lot of people go, to go, you know, for a walk and ride their bike. And I am not in favor of making more congestion. Wouldn't you rather have the pedestrians and the bicycles in the neighborhoods instead of all the cars cutting through all these neighborhoods and zipping around, trying to avoid all the congestion on State, which is already a problem on Center Street, as well as Mission Street? So, yeah, I'm not, I actually have found that the 30 mile an hour zone continues eastbound on State Street, past 25th, where it's actually a 40 mile an hour zone, as well as past Airport Road where it turns to 45. People are still going 30 to 35. So I'm, I'm not understanding where all these people are zipping around, you know, like that. So I'm just, Salem's congested enough as it is. And so there's got to be some compromise that we can all come to.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Amy Gibson and I am a small business owner at 1328 State Street. So, well, I'm at Hair Studio.
Oh, okay.
So I think a lot of the businesses that I'm around are coming, well, I come just to sit and listen because I'm at the mercy of, obviously, my building owner. But the problems that we have as far as businesses and parking is, I have a salon with seven stations. That's seven girls. And then each girl has a person in their chair, maybe one waiting. And we have seven to 21 people needing a place to park. I get one parking spot behind. So I guess, I mean, those are just some of the things that we run into. Like I said, I'm at the mercy of my building owner because with all these things taking place, obviously, you have to tear down to build up, which means we will have to go somewhere else. So I think that just the parking and the alleyway and all that stuff is, you know, is a big issue right there between 13th and 14th. So...
Where do your clients park now?
Thankfully, U.S. Bank has been gracious enough to where, you know, some park there. But we park wherever, all the way down to Adams, to, some people will be brave and park on 14th Street where there's free parking. And then, you know, U.S. Bank. And just, we have three spots in front of us that are, wait, no, I think it's four now. But we have Subway, the restaurant next to us, and then the salon. And so right there, we have four spots for all three of those businesses.
And those are all paid, aren't they?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. How many hours? Two?
Two.
Okay.
And 30 minutes on 13th Street on that side where the barber shop is.
I thought we upped that. Didn't we?
Did we? I don't know.
I think so. I were trying to, anyway.
Yeah. So just a few things. Because behind us and behind the alleyway, you have the school district. And if you park there, that's a big no-no. So anyways, those are just some of the things that we have, you know, encountered in not having somewhere to walk across the street safely. We see state workers all the time, right there at that little median, trying to cross the street for lunch. And it's, it's congested and it's an issue. So, I mean, I'm, I'm happy for all the improvements. At the same time, I'm sad because obviously, we will have to go somewhere else, but...
Well, thank you very much for coming down.
Yeah.
Really appreciate it. Did anyone have any questions? Okay.
Question for recess.
I'm going to close the, well, questions for staff.
You can do that.
Okay. I'll close here.
I agree with Counselor Hoy. I'd like a recess.
Yeah.
Now, if we could.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to recess without closing the hearing, so let's... Don't need to. Sure. I got this lawyer telling me close the hearing. Okay. We'll recess for five minutes. Order, I have another person who's requested the opportunity to speak. We chose not to close the public hearing, so we'll have another testimony. Where'd he go? Better be here.
Mark?
Mark, where are you? There you are.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I, my name's Mark Connect and I live over at 225th Street Northeast, east, east over there off of State Street. And I understand you're going to do some improvements. What kind of improvements are you going to do? Something similar you did over on Portland Road?
No. It's a little, it's different than that, Mark. It's, it's just a look at mixed-use zones for housing and buildings on State Street between 12th and 25th. And also looking at the roads' configuration, whether it ought to be three lanes or four lanes, and wider sidewalks and bike lanes, that kind of stuff.
I see.
But it's 12th to 25th on State.
I see. How far down is that going to go?
12th to 25th.
Well, that's about the area I live in.
You live on 5th?
On 20th, 25th.
It'd be right down there by you, wouldn't it? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. You interested?
Yeah.
Okay. You want it to happen?
So anyway, like I said, we can't build low-income housing fast enough in this community. And we do need that. That, and I appreciate the city council working on that and so on. But anyway, I'm anxious to see what you're going to do. Are you going to put in some mixed development there? Is that what you're going to do?
That'd be the idea. Okay?
Yeah. We got, let's see, we got two lanes going this way, two, we got four lanes there now, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I forgot, I forgot about the meeting and I want to thank you, Chuck. And one of these days, I am going to have to get together and have coffee.
Okay. Sounds good to me, Mark. Thank you.
And then also, out there on, I, and you've talked about this before, I guess from my understanding, that at some point, I guess, urban renewal funds are going to be used to fix the, fix McGill Crest out there. And is, is the funding, is that what's holding that whole operate, that whole project up out there?
Yes. Yeah, it is. But it'll come. It'll come.
It'll come.
Yeah, out by Social Security and out in that area. I know you're very interested in that area.
Well, you know, you were on the city council at the time. I was the driving force to get those three blocks handicapped accessible from Pringle and 12th up there because that was the only way to get there.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess, I guess, Adam Peterson was the mayor at the time.
Yeah.
And I guess you had to get the grant money from somewhere, but I'm glad we got that done.
Yeah. Appreciate your work on it, Mark.
Or otherwise, Americans Disability Act, come in here and find it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chuck.
We'll keep track of this and we'll look forward to any other further comment you have as this progresses over the next few years.
All right. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Anyone have any questions for staff? Counselor Lewis?
Well, I've got several. I'll start one at a time, give everybody a chance. I, I want to talk a minute, a minute about the idea of different height limitations. And maybe the one that sounds the clearest and simplest to me is if you were to keep the 55-foot height limitations, but say, except for bordering the historic neighborhood, and that that area would be 45 feet. My question is, how much of 12th Street would I be talking about? Not 12th Street, State Street.
So the historic district extends roughly from 13th to the creek, past 17th Street, currently.
Past what?
Past 17th Street currently. So it'd be probably the majority of that western portion of the corridor on the north side if you were to do it adjacent to the historic district.
Okay. Thanks. I answered my question.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I was not raising my hand until I saw nobody raised their hand. And then I decided I should.
I've got some.
I have a number of questions. I'll ask a few of them and then I'll, maybe we'll come back. Just some elementary questions first. Is the setback requirement also south of State Street?
Yes.
Okay. Then, this is sort of a, well, I'll just ask it. Have you ever seen, and this, I think, is more for Director Wright, have you ever seen[1743.61] this, I think, is more for Director Wright, have you ever seen a road diet fail? That is, before and after road diets, before the road looked bad, and after the road diet, it also looked bad?
When you say "look bad," do you mean like aesthetically?
Aesthetically and functionally, too.
Functionally, okay. In my experience, albeit limited, with road diets, I have not seen that. But keep in mind that I've only seen road diets perform in other jurisdictions for a very brief period of time. So this is something that has to be assessed and has to be considered on the merits itself, probably over at least some period of time that is greater than I've seen them. I've only seen them really operate for maybe two years. So I would defer to Director Fernandez for ways in which we could better assess whether or not these fail over time. I mean, that's the best I've got.
Yeah. You know, if you want to answer that, Director Fernandez, fine. If you don't, that's fine, too.
Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. None of them have failed in Salem.
Okay.
You know, we, I think most traffic engineers are cautious by nature, and there's kind of a traffic volume that we look at, and I think that a lot of traffic engineers look at where the, a three-lane section is, it works, and it works real well for all the reasons that were talked about. You've got a two-way left turn lane, and you've got a bike lane, and then if you add right turn lanes, you know, some of the issues we have right now on 17th Street, which has worked well for years, is that it needs some right turn lanes.
Yeah.
So as you get more pedestrians, then you're blocked for turning right. So I think those are the kinds of insurance policies that are recommended here, that, you know, we want to make sure that the three-lane section is successful.
If I can make another comparison, I might compare it in town to 12th Street going uphill there, after 12th and 13th meet, and what you've got is two or three lanes coming south before 12th and 13th merge, and two or three lanes going north, and then you end up with a three-lane street with turn lanes and medians, and that, and if I recall right, the original plan was for a four-lane road running uphill there on 12th, but the...
That's not really correct. It was always, just to clear the record,
Okay.
it was always going to be a three-lane section.
Okay.
The question was, what was going to be the cross-section at the intersection of Madrona?
Okay.
And what ended up being constructed were the right turn lanes, the north-south right turn lanes.
So...
But it was never, it was always going to be a three-lane section.
But there hasn't been any demonstrated problem in going from the three-lane, I think, two or three-lane going south on 12th Street, to the one-lane going south going up the hill?
Right, well, the, we're adding the last piece that we talked about,
Yeah.
you know, 20 years ago,
Yeah, turning right on...
which was to extend the southbound to Fairview, so basically, we can carry the two lanes, so that right-turn traffic can turn right, and that is, you know, the, kind of the key issue there. So anytime we can add a turn lane at key intersections, that's going to make the three-lane section work a lot better.
Thank you. One more question, and then I'll defer. I'd be interested in the staff's response to the shade studies that we've seen tonight, and I'd be particularly interested in that response if the height requirements on the north side were lowered to either 50 feet or 45 feet.
So, I have two responses, I guess. The first is, we did conduct kind of a limited shadow study that compared the existing zoning to the proposed zoning and the maximum. And there's been, you know, debate on whether you could ever get a 70-foot tall building in the current zone adjacent to the historic district, but that is the maximum height allowed. So we compared that to a 55, what's proposed. So we did do that analysis. This zone, though, however, isn't requiring anyone to build to the maximum. So just like today, you know, you see different development based on the market and other factors, and so we aren't saying that a building would have to be 55-feet height. If you lowered the height, yes, to 45 or 55, or 50, the shadows would be less.
Another thing as well, Counselor, and for all, the shadow analysis that was provided gave a depiction of buildings surrounded by a flat plain. And I think what's really important to keep in mind, whether it's looking at the aerial photographs for the tree canopy that surrounds the center part along the alley, north of State Street, between State Street and Court, or the rest of the tree canopy that goes along Court Street itself, there is a significant and robust tree canopy already in place. And so it's very difficult to really understand the true, actual conditions of the area right now in terms of shade from trees, which are going to be higher than 55 feet, any mature canopy especially, although it'd be more like 100 feet in some cases, some species. So it's really important to bear in mind that there are, of course, changes with new shade from new buildings, but there's also existing shade or shadow from the existing tree canopy that surrounds that area. So it's just an important thing to keep in mind, that any of this analysis should take into account not only the new shade that would be produced from buildings, but also the existing shade that is already here by virtue of a very robust canopy throughout the broad sections of city blocks that go along the north side of State Street.
Counselor Nanki, did you have something? You had your hand up first. Do you want to ask?
Yeah, two quick ones, just in response to the 12th Street piece, and that's 20 years later that we finally were able to fix a main portion of that, where the traffic used to stack on the hill, and after the improvements, it stacked down in the flats where nobody could make the cross-movements. And similarly, I have concerns about State Street, depending on what we do, and a question would be, the future alignment is all inside of existing curb line? Would that be a correct statement?
The curb-to-curb would remain the same largely, yeah, except for intersections where there'd be additional turn lanes.
I'm just curious if we could cone, seeing how everything is on 12th Street right now, where there's tons of cones, can we test it and see where traffic goes?
Yeah, we really, we've talked a lot about that, and our thoughts is that we really can't, because by virtue of the cones themselves, we'd create enough confusion that, I think, we'd create congestion that wouldn't necessarily be the same kind of congestion that we might see with a restriping. I think if we, if we want to test it, I think we would just need to bite the bullet and restripe it. You know, it's easy to cone off a lane, but it's very difficult to cone a four-lane undivided into a three-lane divided, and not create confusion with a bunch of cones.
Okay.
I'm surprised that'd be confusing.
Yeah, it slows people down.
Can I just?
And then, a second question in regards to the, yeah.
I just wanted to add that the proposed hybrid would, you know, have those intersection improvements that would include right turn lanes, so coning off would be difficult to kind of mimic the additional capacity and turning movement that intersection improvements would do.
Right. So in regards to this, the comment on parking from Sybels, would we, in fact, take away parking, or would that be only if that property redeveloped?
So that section of State Street is, I think, just as wide as what we're proposing there. So in that section, there would be no change, but just as any kind of, as redevelopment occurs, if a street does not meet the standard that's adopted in the TSP, so would be 96 feet, that's when we would actually see the sidewalk widening. There is no funding right now for a construction project to redo all of State Street, so unless we have some magic funding. So it would be through redevelopment.
Okay, so if, in fact, they redeveloped at some period of time, then their parking would have to be on the side or in the back, and they would have to have their building closer to the, thanks.
Okay. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to ask about the suggestion that we reduce the height on the north side of State Street. Would those buildings, if we were to reduce those by one story, would those potential buildings be viable for a developer at that point?
That's a tough question to answer. And we did interview developers, and we looked at kind of what the development pattern has been, for example, in the North Broadway area, where we're kind of trying to mimic what's happening there. In those areas, the height is, the maximum height is 50 feet, but a lot of those properties, like Broadway Commons and the Y, they're actually taller than 55, 50 feet. They went through a different process to get there. So one of the reasons we recommended the 55 feet for four stories is to remove that additional process if someone wanted to do four stories.
I'm not sure that answered my question.
Well, one thing you might explain, the additional process continues to be available, wouldn't it?
Yes, you can do an adjustment process, yes.
Okay, so, does that make sense?
All right.
Okay.
If I have one more, Mr. Mayor, regarding the road diet, and this is for Mr. Fernandez. The traffic engineers have studied this, and they're supportive of the hybrid road diet. Is that true?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Kazer?
Thank you. Could you walk me through how staff arrived at that 55-foot building height? Like, how tall is the first story and subsequent stories? How does that work in the MU1, MU2?
So, in the MU1, the ground floor height would be 14 feet, that's the minimum, so that it could accommodate retail in the future. In the MU1, it's 10 feet, so it's less. And then each additional story could be maybe 10 to 12, depending on how it's designed. But again, we looked at other areas where four-story mixed-use projects have been developed in recent years, and they were all taller than 50 feet.
So I heard from the, kind of the residents along Court Street, and I specifically asked Mr. O'Connor, you know, what do you support for building height? And they said four stories. So what are we, what are we looking at? What does that actually translate to in terms of feet, a four-story building?
You could do it at 50 feet.
At 50 feet.
And like the mayor was saying, if they needed to go higher, there is that adjustment process.
That adjustment, that's available for any?
Any development.
Any development, okay. And just to clarify, too, in one of the written testimony letters we received, the Broadway overlay, which I think is probably going to be the most comparable low overlay, because it's in my neighborhood, it's not officially historically designated, but very same age of buildings and how it works, that overlay is a 50-foot tall, correct? Yeah, okay. I have other questions, but I'll defer.
Oh, you want to defer, okay. Counselor McCoy?
So, we talked about, there was a lot of talk about the alley, where the alleys going by in these buildings. That alley is a public right-of-way, isn't it? I mean, it's city-owned, so their concerns are their, I guess, requests to make that, save that for their use and not the other building's use, is not something we entertain, I'm assuming?
The properties, both to the north and south, do have access. The commercial properties currently have access, so we'd be taking access away from those properties, yes.
We, okay, can we do that?
Dan Asheson, City Attorney. We haven't done that in the past. Whether we could do it or not's a different question.
Why we're not, I was even, can we even do it? Can we entertain it?
We contemplated potentially limiting truck traffic on it, which...
Okay, well, that was, okay. Because I see what their concerns are, on the one hand. On the other hand, you know, the other public entities on the other side of the alley, it seems to me they got pretty much sort of the same rights to be using that alley as the homeowners, and so, but they have some valid concerns. If it's large trucks coming down a small alley that can't really handle it, or other uses, how do you deal with that?
Counselor McCoy, I'll try to answer that. Lisa Anderson will be. So, the alley, like they said, the specific alley they're talking about, I think, is 16 feet wide. We have standards that we look at for development, for any development, regardless of the zone, when they want to redevelop, where's their driveway going to be? And I think you heard from some astute neighbors earlier that we have standards where we don't want them to put new driveways onto major streets like State Street. We don't want it to cross the, you know, the sidewalk for pedestrian safety and the bike lane, and to slow down traffic. So generally, we try to get them to put alleys on, or driveways on side streets, or to use existing alleys. However, we wouldn't let somebody use an existing alley as their only means to their parking lot if it's not wide enough for two-way traffic. So at 16 feet, that's not wide enough. We would make them widen the alley on their side of the property. If they can't access that property, because they're not the first property, you know, they're two or three or four in, then that might be a reason to give them a driveway on State Street. So we would look at it with a development and figure out, you know, working with Public Works or engineers and the code that we have in place, what's the safest way for them to meet the standards and still provide access. Something like a large truck, the alleys are intended and were designed for garbage trucks, right? So they're already probably used for garbage, and the existing businesses, a lot of them do have access from their parking lots to that alley already today. And some of the conflicts that was brought up in the testimony has to do more with behavior, I think, with people, you know, blocking the alley with their car, or, you know, not using it correctly, or overhanging and that kind of stuff. And the zoning code's not intended to solve that kind of behavior problem, but I think we already have development standards in place that will provide safety in the alley.
Thank you. Okay, that's great.
I wanted to ask about the idea of amenities in this. Are there any amenities mentioned in this? I mentioned I was kind of taken with Mr. Slater's park idea, but I also think that adding to it was Counselor Anderson's, you know, a place to put in your canoe or your kayak, or that kind of, are we looking at any amenities in this plan like that?
So the proposed zones allow for those uses, a park, for example, recreation uses, but we didn't go into detail in terms of saying the city should create a new park at this property or this property that was outside the scope of this project. It would be possible, if you wanted to buy a property and create a park, the zoning that's proposed would allow that.
Okay, so it would be, it'd just be a different process than through this mechanism? Okay, thank you. It's a good idea. Yeah, Counselor, do you have something? Who's next? Lewis?
Yeah, I've got two, but I'll start with the one that's getting me. I want to talk, well, first I want to verify, the hybrid is really the road diet, but just between 12th and 17th, okay. If I missed the specificity in the material, I'm sorry, but what about the, okay, the two-lane road now, where the frustration, in my opinion, comes in is where you have cars stopping, or where you have a bus stopping in the right-hand lane, people start moving over to the left. Would this plan require bus turnouts, so they would have to pull out, or would we run into the situation where we're now down to one lane, and buses would stop, and they would stop all the traffic?
So we worked with Transit on this project. They were on our stakeholder advisory committee and our technical advisory committee, and they specifically do not want bus pullouts on State Street. There would be enough room between, on the Harbait portion, on the western portion, for a bus to pull over and still have the one lane of traffic going through.
Okay, I want to make sure I understand. The Transit District would say, no, they want to still stop in the middle of what would now be one lane?
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, they were opposed to bus pullouts, but there would be enough room in the proposed hybrid design in that three-lane section for a bus to pull over and get out of traffic, of the one lane in each direction.
All right, if I may, there's the two-foot, there's a two-and-a-half-foot buffer zone and the five-foot bike lane that the bus can, you know, it's legal for a bus to pull over into a bike lane, even if they don't use up that entire area. Once you have the two-way left turn lane, it's easy for a car to go around. You know, if they just pull over some, you can then use the turn lane to go around it. So it's not, it's not the same situation as you have, you know, in the four-lane section, where they are just blocked. You know, it's a 10-foot lane or 11-foot lane, and there's really no other alternative but to get around the bus, to change lanes. In the three-lane section, there's room for both the bus pulling over and cars to get around it.
But no requirement that the bus has to go over in the plan?
Right.
Right, but Transit, the problem with turnouts is, bus stops change all the time. And, I mean, there's turnouts all over town that Chariots doesn't use anymore, because there's no more, it's not a stop anymore. So that's why they don't like it, because they, one, they have their issues about getting back into traffic, but second, it's easy to put up a sign, it's easy to take off a sign. It's hard, once you put in a turnout, you know, what do you do with it? A turnout, we're only looking at eight-foot sidewalks, so a turnout would eat up the sidewalk. You know, you'd have to then eat into the, eat into the, you know, the development space with the, to create more sidewalks. So that's why it's not in the plan. They didn't want it, and we understand why.
Well, but what I'm hearing is in the plan is there's the space, two feet, five feet, whatever it was, and then the...
Seven and a half.
And then the bike lane, so...
Yeah, two and a half.
In essence, as a practical matter, the bus could pull over enough to allow traffic to continue on the one lane.
Correct.
The issue about stopping in the middle of the one lane and then going into the center lane is you're ending up using that center lane and causing the same problem that we have now with the four lanes, in my opinion. Okay.
Right, we would need the bus drivers to pull over.
Well, is there an enforcement mechanism? I mean, is this just based on what Chariots wants to do, or the driver wants to do, or is there a requirement that they pull over and not impede traffic?
I do not believe there is a requirement for bus drivers to pull over into the...
They don't do it now, so I assume...
So we could, we would certainly ask nice.
I think, though, that it's their practice to pull to... I, I think, though, that it's their practice to pull to the curb, right? So that people can step from the curb onto the bus.
Well, on State Street, it isn't working.
Well, there's no...
It would, you're saying it would under the new...
Well, there's no bike lane for them to pull into today, right? So in the plan, there would be a bike lane, as Director Fernandez said, and a two-foot buffer for the bike lane. So to get to the curb, they would have to pull into the bike lane.
Okay.
So, I think that's what Julie was going to say as well.
Julie was my mayor.
Okay. Counselor, I don't know, what do you go for?
What am I, huh?
You're Kizer.
Kizer. Was there a traffic study about how the full road diet, either the hybrid and the full road diet would impact kind of other streets around it? Was there a study about that done?
There was a traffic study of all three options that looked at generally where the model that we use for all kind of traffic changes, where the traffic would maybe go. It didn't show traffic on the local streets, Court and Chomekada, probably because it would need to be a city-fit volume for it to show up. It showed traffic dispersing under, under the road diet, the full road diet.
The full road diet. And then the partial road diet, did it show any, the hybrid?
There would be some diversion, but significantly less diversion.
Okay. And then the, I know the number 2,000's been kind of, I don't quite, I didn't quite catch where that came from. That was 2,000 car...
Cars during rush hour.
During rush hour, is what we get per hour?
No, it would be 2,000, so there would be roughly 2,000 cars that would use State Street if it wasn't for the road diet. So those 2,000 cars would divert off of this.
I see. Okay, thank you.
And to clarify, that's, that's project, that's, that number is 20 years out, a projection.
Okay.
So we're not talking about 2,000 cars today. We're talking about the projection in 2035.
Okay. And then I have one other question, was brought up in testimony about one of the visuals here showing, you know, there's balconies and apartment buildings and things like that. The regulation of the building style, I guess, is that regulated through the zoning or is that a separate process? If a developer came and said, "Hey, I want to put up an apartment building and have balconies and things like that on it," is that, how is that regulated? Or how is that, yeah?
So both of the proposed zones have simple design standards, mostly addressing the front, the front ground floor, the windows awning, etc., and the parking in the rear. We don't, there's no proposal for, you know, requiring or balconies or anything.
So that would be on a case-by-case basis, then, that somebody would say, "I want to do this with this parcel, and this is what I'm proposing." That would go through its own process, land use process for the type of building they're proposing and what it is and all of that.
Correct, it would go through site plan review and perhaps other...
Yep, okay, so that's separate from this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Let's talk about alleys for a bit. I believe you said there was some sort of requirement on the south end of the alley north of State Street, in other words, on the business, commercial, retail, multiple use, or multiple housing unit side of State Street, that there'd be some sort of fence that was adjacent to the alley?
Yes, the proposal is to have required screening, a six-foot-tall fence or wall with landscaping.
So you're talking about something opaque, not a, not a chain-link fence, but either a solid one or a chain-link with landscaping?
Yes.
Okay, then Counselor Kizer and I walked the alleys on, on Saturday, and they don't go all the way through. So what happens where the alley dead-ends? I mean, is that a right-of-way that the city still has? Where will the property that is abutting north end of State Street end? Will it end where the alleys are now or will it end at the other side of where the alleys are now?
I'm not, I guess I'm not...
Okay, right now, we have an alley that goes maybe four, four streets, and then it just stops. It's, there's no alley at that point. The alley dead-ends.
Yes.
So from the dead end going east, where does the property line end for the development on the south side of the, what used to be an alley, but is no longer an alley?
So you're asking which property we're rezoning and then what the setback would be when there's no alley?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That's a much better way to thank you for explaining, making my question from lawyer ease to planning.
The zone-to-zone setback. So then we, we institute a zone-to-zone setback, so we look at what the zone is next to your property when there's no alley, and then what your zoning is, and then we determine the setback. And so we're proposing next to residential...
It's the same 10 feet with the required screening.
Okay, and the 10 feet starts...
At the property line.
At the property line, which is the south end of the alley there.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Then, what's the average daily trip right now going down State Street?
On the western portion, it's roughly 16,000. As you go east, it's closer to 20, 20-plus.
Okay, but it's still under 20?
I think it's close.
I mean, it, year to year, it varies. It's around 20,000.
Okay, thank you. Then, one more set of questions, and you said that in the MU1, because you have a, of the, you know, the first floor is, you would like, it could be commercial, so you have a 13 or 14-foot-high ceiling, but it can be residential until the market makes it want to be commercial. So if I, is that 14 feet? Is that what the requirement is or 13 feet?
14.
Okay, so then if each story is 10 feet, would it not be possible to build a four-story building with a 45-foot height?
It, it really depends on how they design it and their mechanical equipment and that kind of thing, so...
Okay, well, let's set out the, set aside the mechanical equipment now. You could design, under the MU zoning, a building that is 45 feet high and has the taller first story and then the 10-feet third stories that would still be under 45 feet.
Theoretically, you could. I think when, what Eunice was saying is that the newest mixed-use buildings we have, such as Broadway, couldn't manage to do it in 50 and had to get adjustments and variances for slightly over 50. So based on that, we'd do 55.
Then where does the, where do the HVAC and the mechanical stuff, where are they included in whatever the height limit is?
They're allowed citywide to project above the maximum height, up to 15 feet.
Go ahead.
The mixed-use zones would require it to be screened or set back so that it wouldn't be visible.
And, oh, describe, I understand screening, but describe setback.
So, so somewhere like in the middle of the building up top, so that when you're walking by, you can't see it.
Okay, and could you see it from Court Street looking south?
You'd have to be taller than the 50 or 55-foot building. You'd have to be looking down to see it, because it would be in the middle.
That was a no.
Correct, no.
Okay.
Any further questions? Counselor, thank you.
Thanks, just to kind of follow up on that. So if they have a parapet wall to screen the HVAC equipment, is that not included in the maximum building height?
That would have to be under the maximum building height. Any part of the structure would. The actual equipment could project above.
But what other type of screening?
Right, exactly.
Would it have to be offset from the actual side of the building internally?
You could have a parapet wherever. You could have it at the front, but that would push essentially the building down, right, to get the maximum 55.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
I'm sorry, one more.
Okay.
There's been talk about setback, not step-back, but setback of 10 feet. And there's been discussion of maybe the setback should be 20 feet. What would be the effect, in your view, on the potential for development of those properties if it was a 20-foot setback?
It would reduce the development potential. We do have other mixed-use zones or overlays where there is a 20-foot setback from abutting residential zones, but they don't have that kind of step-back based on height. So that was kind of the compromise of how do you mitigate the higher building but have that 10-foot setback.
Okay, and was there any discussion of a 15-foot setback? That looks like a no.
We might as well, right?
Yeah, it's almost over.
I, just, I'm just going to tackle on to Counselor Anderson's question. The other zones where we have that 20-foot setback, it's zone-to-zone, do those other overlay zones have alleys?
Yes, there's alleys in some of our overlay zones. Broadway has alleys.
Because you could conceivably, you have your alley, which is right now 16 feet, and then they have to bring it to standard, depending on what they're doing, plus you have your 10 feet. So you're actually getting a further setback if you include the alley.
Correct.
Or further away from the residential property line to an actual building being started.
Correct, and none of those other zones require any setback against an alley. So anywhere in the city right now, you don't have to do a setback for an alley.
This would be unique to this MU with alley, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, any further question? Yes?
Okay. So, you know, going with the hybrid plan and the bike lane, buffered bike lane, what, if you were traveling east and then you hit 17th, how would you transition from the buffered bike lane, say, to the right side of the curbing, continuing east? Will there be just a signage saying bike lane ends? Or what are the, what are the traffic plans for that transition?
There would be signage, as one of the testifiers said. You know, bikes could continue on State Street. They could choose, if they didn't have a destination on State Street, to go onto the bike lanes on 17th Street and take a side street.
Any plans for striping beyond 17th for a bike lane? I just didn't see it in the plans.
No, the hybrid doesn't have a bike lane east of 17th. The full road diet would, but that would change the configuration of the street to three lanes.
Okay, thank you.
Would the, would it, I'd follow up on that. Would it take them then onto Ferry or Chomekada, using those as bike routes rather than bike lanes? Am I understanding that right?
Yes.
Okay. So that'd be the concept, is move them on to the existing bike route?
Right, and, and 17th has bike lanes, so, so at least a bicyclist can transition from a bike lane to a bike lane, you know, as they, if they want to seek other alternatives, you know, either to the north or, or to the south. So that, that was, that was the idea, is to at least get them, get, get, get the bicyclist to another location where there are bike facilities.
But there would be striping, clear marking, and then the, you would find yourself entering a designated bike route that's been there for a number of years.
Right, and there would be, we would probably design in some kind of signage to, to direct a bicyclist that isn't aware of where, where that would be.
Would you review Ferry and Chomekada then for signage comparable to what we've done on the Maple Winter Street bikeway? I mean, would you potentially look at that to create a more bicycle-friendly...
I think those are designated, right, as...
Mill and Chomekada.
Yeah, Mill and Chomekada, so they're designated.
Is it Mill and Chomekada?
Whatever improvements aren't already there, we would, those, those could be installed...
It'd be something to look at, I think, just that, that idea of signing it for the protection of the bicyclists in those cases. Yeah, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for that question. As a cyclist who does ride State Street occasionally, certainly not the, the west end where there is, are no bike lanes, because I find it really dangerous, and I actually ride my bike on I-84 and I-5 occasionally, but I don't like State Street. If that tells you something. I, I'm really cautious about building another bike lane to nowhere. We, I think that, so if, if we just end them at 17th, theoretically, you're going to have to take, you're going to have to turn left off of State Street onto 17th, and while I'm comfortable crossing a lane of traffic and into a turn lane and waiting for a light, most, most people on bikes are not. So I, I think we need to really work on a, on a better plan to connect 17th up to wherever it is, 25th, where the bike lane started, starts again.
I think, yeah, okay. Okay, a closed public hearing. Closed public hearing, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I move the staff recommendation with the following amendments. The height requirement for any MU1 that abuts a historic district be 50 feet with the setbacks as discussed, that the recommendation of the planning commission, and I can't find it now, but concerning the parking that the, here it is. This is on page three of the staff report, number 9B. Reduce the off-street parking requirements for retail uses from one parking space per 250 square feet to one parking space per 400 square feet in the mixed-use 1 and mixed-2 zones. And with the recommendation that the park, that there be, that we look into purchasing a park on 21st Street, near 21st Street on State Street as discussed.
Second by Kizer. Discussion.
I have some.
Okay.
You know, I ask about the 45, you know, the, the two main concerns of the neighbors in the historic district are alley use and height. And so that's why I ask about 45 feet, could you get the four stories in? And maybe you could, but it's pretty tight. But then when I heard that from Counselor Kizer, that if the alleys were to be used for certain purposes for the new development in the, in the MU zoning, they would have to add on to the alley on their side of the property up to, I would guess, six feet? You'd go to 16 to...
20.
To 20, okay, four, four feet. Is that right?
22.
22, so that's six feet. So that, in effect, makes the setback starting at the end of the alley, which makes the setback 16 feet as opposed to 10 feet if there's that development. So I think that is what made me say that ought to be 50 feet as opposed to 45, because that leaves a little more option for individual design of the development. Then I, I have to say, I'm not totally a data-driven person, but I went out and I, on, I do have a car, and I drove my car east and west on State Street from 12th to 17th during morning rush hour, during evening rush hour, and in the middle of the day. And going west to east during the non-rush hours, it was between 58 seconds and a minute 19 that I could traverse that. And that includes going around the curve by the bank. During the rush hour times, it went from a minute 23 to two minutes. Going, that's, that's west-east. Going east to west, it was basically about the same. So are we going to have a big increase in traffic density and, and confusion because we're going from four lanes to three lanes with the turn? Well, let's say we are. So let's say it's going to be a 50% slowdown. That means that in the rush hour traffic, someone who wants to get from 17th to 12th, it might take them one minute longer. And I would say that's a very small individual sacrifice for the greater good of the development that's going to be there. Then I thought, well, is that really the way things go? So I went on the internet, you know, a series of tubes, and I found these, these various reports from CityLab. The heading is "Benefits to Slower Traffic Measured in Money and Lives." And this was from a study in New Brunswick, New Jersey, that had 20 blocks in the study. And what they determined was the traffic impacts amounted to two or three minutes of total delay with going from a four-lane to a three-lane. So that's two, two to three minutes of total delay in a 20 blocks. We've got four blocks here. Then I looked at something called "Safety and Operational Analysis of Four-to-Three-Lane Conversions: Road Diets in Michigan." And what they said in Michigan was that you potentially increased during rush hour, you increased your time from about 30 seconds to a maximum of 160 seconds. So that's a two-minute increase, and that was at the level of 20,000 cars per day average trip. Then I looked at something done by the Federal Highway Administration and the, the, it says road diet, and the, it's called Mythbusters, and they say, "Myth: Road Diets Make Traffic Worse." So the Federal Highway Administration says that road diets do not make traffic work. Then I looked at something from some outfit... Then I looked at something from some outfit called Streetlight Data, and the article was "Evaluating Road Diets with Big Data," not just regular data, but big data. And this was a one-mile section of streets in Seattle. So we're talking about one mile. And the ultimate conclusion was, of that whole one mile of Rainier Avenue, the average travel time increased from 162 seconds to 196 seconds. So that's a mile street where a road diet increased the time that people would be on the road for 30 seconds. So, based on what I see, you know, in the limited research that I've done, I couldn't find any going the other way, I don't really think that the road diet is going to slow people down any appreciable amount who are trying to get from downtown Salem to East Salem, or from East Salem to downtown Salem. So the final thing I would say is, I'm in favor of the hybrid approach, even though if I were looking at this alone, I would be in favor of the diet all the way. But I understand the staff recommendation says we will, our goal is to, in fact, I think it's on page eight or nine of your report, the goal is to have the, ultimately have the road diet the whole way, but to do it in phases and to review it after completion of the first phase. So I think this is, is a good compromise, and I'm going to vote for it.
Council Kayser.
Thank you. So I'll, I'll speak first about the first piece, the road diet. I think it was before, as a city councillor, and I think Council Anderson has it for some reason with him tonight here, I penned a minor report about state and 25th Street and how terrible it was, and still, still is, but it's a little bit better now. I travel State Street all the time, and this is much needed. I actually support the full road diet, yeah, thanks, my pre-council report. I actually support the full road diet, I think, like Council Anderson individually. I think that the hybrid, though, is a good approach. It's a good first start to kind of ease into it, I guess, and to reevaluate that. I know there's a lot of concern about it. I've read quite a few studies as well. I've seen it happen. I know it's happening in other areas of the city. We're preparing to do this on Broadway here in the not-too-distant future. We're taking it down from four lanes to a lane with a turn lane. So I think it's been a proven method, and it's not going to be a burden on, on people and their cars. What it is going to do is, it's going to increase options for people to, to have other modes of transit. So we're going to have wider sidewalks and bike lanes, and that will hopefully encourage more people to get out of their cars and walk or bike to those places, or use transit when we get, well, we have a transit system. It definitely could be better, but, you know, I think the Transit District's working on that as well as we are. So I'm totally in support of the hybrid approach. As far as the zoning goes, I know there's a lot of concern from the Court-Chomeketa Historic District, and I think most people know that, I'm a historic preservation advocate. I did it professionally for a number of years. I worked at the State Historic Preservation Office. I was the national register coordinator for the state of Oregon. I get it. I also get that historic preservation also means that those neighborhoods are not frozen in time. In the most successful historic districts, the most vibrant historic districts that I've personally seen are the ones that are right next to vibrant commercial areas, because those are the places that people want to live, and those are the places that people want to build in, and they want to have their life in. If, if you, if you kind of want to block yourself off, those historic districts don't work. And I'm not in any way implying that that's what the Court-Chomeketa District wants, but I think it's, it's a good reminder that development can be a really good thing, and it can bring vibrancy to your historic district, and it can also bring a lot more attention to it than you didn't have before, and appreciative attention, too. So I think the, the 50-foot height, kind of having this amendment to do 50 feet when abutting a residential historic district is a good compromise. And I think that that's a word that we don't use a whole lot right now in, in our politics, is compromising. We really seem to be, it's either this or that, and if you don't do my thing, then I don't like you, and I'm not going to, you know, listen to you. And I think we do need to listen to each other, and I think staff and councillors have really taken the comments of the public to heart, and we've worked to make it work for everybody. So I feel that this is a good compromise and a good outcome, and I do think this is going to be a win-win-win, like some of our testimony was tonight, so.
Council Lewis.
I support the motion to a certain extent, and let me see if I can make it clear. I still have a concern with the traffic that moves east and west. There are many different roads, if you include the neighborhood roads, that you can get from east to west or west to east. But we have some major ones, Mission, State, Center, Market, and those are the roads that people are used to driving on from the river to I-5. And I believe it's possible to move as much traffic in one lane as we have now with two, with the confusion of no center lane. But what, what troubles me is, for example, the transit. If they stop in the middle of a one-way, one-lane street, then traffic stops completely. And it may be a minute, a minute and a half. But for some people, that's important. As a retired person, I can, I can live with that. But as a, as a young family person with a busy life, those minutes add up. Not that they're going to do anything drastic, but I think they will change their performance, and they'll use a different street, whether that brings more congestion to Market or Mission, or whether they start using the neighborhood streets like Chomeketa. So I would like to make an amendment to the motion that this, in the plan, the city, and I don't know if it's possible to demand that transit use, pull out to the curb, but to use as strong a language as possible to convince them that on, on this area, we want you pulling over so traffic can continue to move. And hopefully, that's a clear enough amendment.
Second, looking for a second. Second, Yankee. A discussion?
Amendment.
On the amendment. Do you want to talk about this at all? Do you want to talk about?
Sure.
Okay, go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been working for quite a while now in the Transit Committee with developing a better relationship with the folks at the chariots and having, developing a relationship where the city and the bus service work more in concert with one another rather than in opposite directions. And I, I don't think that this amendment's necessary. I think that the buses do pull over where there's a place for them to pull over. I experienced that frequently throughout my commute, and I'm, as you know, I live in East Salem, so I travel these routes all the time, and I don't, I don't see the amendment as necessary, and I think it could actually do a little bit of harm to our relationship with the chariots, because we're, it feels like we're blaming them a little bit, and I don't think that we should be doing that.
Council Kayser.
I agree with Council Hoey. I don't think it's necessary. And as a State Street commuter almost daily, the buses do get over. I mean, they're trying to pull over as much as they can. It's just that there's not anywhere for them to pull over to. And they do go up against the curb, and they have folks that, you know, use canes and walkers, and they want to get them off the road as safely as possible. So they're not stopping in the middle of travel lanes and just, you know, dumping people out the door. They really are trying to pull over. So I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion, or amendment fails. Okay? We're back to the original motion. Who wants to speak to it? Council Hoey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief and just say that I think that probably nobody is going to be leaving here tonight 100% satisfied, which I think is probably a good sign. I feel like we listened and heard the input from a lot of our, a lot of the residents, a lot of, we read over 600 pages worth of information for this proposal. The staff did, I think, a great job on this, and I think nobody's going to leave 100% satisfied, but nobody's going to leave here 100% unhappy either. So I feel like that's, we've done our job if that's the case.
Council Anderson.
Two very quick things. One, to follow up to what Council Hoey said. In my business, you negotiate and you reach compromise, and a standard saying, and when we reach some sort of settlement, it's usually monetary, but it can be other things, is that the best settlement is when each side is a little bit unhappy with what the end result is. Then I would also say that about, I don't know, two and a half years ago, maybe I had occasion to visit Ann Arbor, Michigan, to investigate a certain city employee we might be hiring, and I asked specifically to meet with neighborhood group leaders and with historic preservation leaders. And those meetings were set up, and I met with people who, two people who lived in historic houses right a couple blocks from downtown. And to one of them, right next to one of them, which I, I don't know the directions, but to the right, as you're looking at the house, was about a six- or eight-story, multiple-unit apartment building. And then there was this historic, sort of a Queen Anne-type house. And those people said they were happy to have the historic preservation that, that kept their house, and they were also understood that the city is big and is developing, and you end up sometimes where the development meets the historic district. And I think that's sort of what we have here, but we're not going to have any six- or eight-story buildings, you know, right next to the yard line here. We're taking steps to protect our historic districts. So I think we got a good vote coming here.
Yeah, this is, this is a project that I launched while I was a city councillor. This is, so I'm 100% gratified that it's gotten this far, that these issues tend to take several years to accomplish, that we, and it has changed from what I thought it was going to be. But I'll tell you, I, I am just really thrilled to see it moving forward, and it's, it's first steps. Broadway worked that way, too. I mean, each of these kinds of projects, just take a look at Portland Road and how many years we've been working on it as a URA. I mean, this kind of stuff takes a while, but I think this is really a giant step. I think the hybrid offers us an opportunity to measure what a road diet looks like. I drive that and have driven that for 45 years. I've driven State Street coming in and going out to the canyon on a regular basis. And it is, most of the time, better than described. I'm listening to how folks describe it. But then, I think Mission Street is much better than I listened to people talk about. And then there's the weird descriptions I get of Lancaster Drive and what it's like. And commercials, nothing to write home about. I mean, there's a lot of this going on. So I, I sometimes think this gets overblown. But I do think we'll have real success with this. I'm very hopeful. I know we'll get development. This is a street, when I was a student at Willamette, had a lot of little retails going on, and particularly little restaurants. A lot of it was lost to the state of Oregon when it came in with its lawyer building, whatever that thing is, on 12th and State Street, and wiped out A&W and White Coaster and some other Vikings, Vikings Four, and some other things that were going on down there. And 100 years ago, my grandmother had a dress and sort of tailoring shop right in that little vicinity. So this is something that means quite a bit to me personally. I'm very excited to see this moving forward. I think it adds to a vibrancy in a part of town where we've got a college and not a vibrant Main Street section for them, and I think that'll help. I, I think it starts to make a lot of difference. I'm, I'm very excited about this moving forward. I think we'll see a lot happening from it. Council McCoy.
You know, I think, another thing that's important here, I support this, is some of the variety of committees I've served on here, whether it's, you know, working with public transit or with the SDCs and those things, I think, it's evident that we're buttoning up against the urban growth boundaries. And this continual spreading out that we've done with our growth is going to stop, and it's, it's right here. We're, we're about to it. And, and this strikes me as one of, we're looking for an answer. This could be the answer, and we need to start looking at our zoning, and this is a different, unique way to zone an area, improve the density, and maybe prepare for the future, is what we're going to be doing here to get the density to, to, you know, handle another 70,000 people in the next 20 years. So I think this is, this is a good effort, and I'm certainly going to support it.
Okay. Anything further? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. And we're, I see if anyone's got anything for the go-to-the-yarder.